Good evening, everyone. We're going to call this meeting to order. Welcome to the Placca City Commission meeting on January 26, 2023. We're first going to have the Pledge of Allegiance, actually the invocation, I'm sorry. Pastor Mulberry, could you please give us the invocation?
Thank you once again for this day. We thank you for how good you have been. You brought us together once again, and we say thank you tonight. Pray that blessing upon this service, this meeting, the conversation. Pray God that you will continue to give vision, leadership for the city, that we may move forward in the things that are needed and necessary in this very day. We pray for wisdom, insight, understanding, and those things that are necessary. We give you praise and glory now, all that you've done, all that you've endured. Continue to bless your leadership. Continue to have your way. Jesus' name. Amen.
Please, you're in standing for the Pledge of Allegiance. Commissioner Jones? Thank you. Roll call, Ms. Grant, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Commissioner Tammy McCasco here.
Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Present.
Commissioner Will Jones.
Present.
Commissioner Rufus Byrne.
Present.
Mayor Ravi Kriya.
Present.
All members present on Capitol Court. We have a court here in the chambers, madam.
Thank you. We're going to approval of the minutes, January 9, 2023, special call meeting.
Motion to set minute as written.
Okay, with motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, thank you unanimous. Also, approval of the minutes for January 12, 2023, regular meeting.
Motion to set minutes as written.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion this second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? No. Okay, great. We're moving along. We're going to have public recognitions presentations. First, promotion, fire engineer Zane Willsey. Who's here from the fire? Department? Is there somebody here? Chief Taylor is here somewhere? Here they come. You're on.
Got here just in time, man. Madam Mayor, Commissioners, we again thank you guys for taking the time to recognize our employees. But tonight, we want to look at the promotion of Zane Willsey to engineer. Zane began his career with us October 19, 2020. Engineer Willsey is a state-certified firefighter, too. Emergency medical technician, State Department-certified pump operator, hazardous materials technician, a U.S.R. operator, and he's working to be a state-certified life safety inspector. Takes a lot to accomplish that much certification in less than three years. He's a young leader with our department, and we're just really happy to have him here and promote him to this position. We thank you. This is a changing of his badge.
She.
Congratulations.
You also forgot that he was also Santa Claus, too.
Yeah, and he was also Santa Claus. He was also Sparky the Dog on Halloween. And we have one more quick recognition for the back auditor. Mr. Coriano called us up and said that he had a couple buildings, a commercial building and a residential building, and they allowed us to train in those buildings for two months, I mean, two weeks before they tore them down, and we wanted to recognize that and thank them for their contribution towards our training for public safety. We've got a lot of really cool things that we can't always do because of the destructive nature of the techniques. So we just wanted to offer back to the group just a token of our appreciation.
Thank you. Somebody here from Jeff? Thank you. Chief, kind of standing right here, please.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we're going to go to Employee of the Month. Ms. Jones?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, Commissioners. This is year two that the City of Placca is now, we've ventured into the Employee of the Month in the spotlight, where employees, any employee given the opportunity to nominate a coworker, supervisor, or whoever they see that meet the criteria for the standards that we've set to receive this award. And this month, the month of January 2023, the City of Placca would like to recognize Officer Terry Kruger.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate the opportunity to be able to recognize the Black Police Department. It's very honored. This award goes, the thank, what we get the opportunity to say thank, thank you goes without saying. It's something that we really look forward to, really do appreciate. I just want to make something right quick because did submit me, submit his name for employee of the month, but I want to read something that just to let you know the impact of this group. On December 8, 2022, at approximately midnight, Officer Kruger observed a car parked suspiciously across the street in Beckford. When the driver of the vehicle stole, the vehicle quickly drove away from the area, Officer Kruger decided to check Beckford and ensure the business was okay. When he drove into the lot, he observed a truck which was leaving the parking lot. Due to the suspicious activity, Officer Kruger conducted a traffic stop on the truck. The occupants of the truck were identified as Williams Roberts, 24, and Taylor Jones, 22, both of Jennings, Florida. During the traffic stop, Officer Kruger observed vehicle parts, ski masks, gloves, a window punch, and other items in plain view. Officer Kruger called for, called, Officer Kruger called for other officers to assist him at the scene and check the dealership. The officers found a 2020 Dodge Charger Hellcat with a broken window, parts missing from the vehicle, and the investigation revealed that Taylor and Roberts had broken into the vehicle and took automotive parts. Roberts and Taylor were both placed under arrest and transported to the Public County Jail, where they were charged with burglary, grand theft, and possession of burglary, too. That's one of three cases that he was involved in, but the special thing about that case was it interrupted the theft ring. That was not only, they not only hit Putnam County, but plagued the state of Florida as well as Georgia. It is now a case that's with the FBI. So his hard work, his attention to detail, and his diligence really paid off and assisted us here locally in preventing another business from being victimized. For his nomination, I just simply wrote, I would like to take this time to nominate Officer Terry Kruger as Employee of the Month. Recently, the Beckham Automotive Group had a vehicle stolen from one of the dealerships. Officer Kruger was able to gather information, identify the suspects, recover the vehicle, and arrest all of the individuals involved. On this particular case, it was three juveniles. This was all done within the same night. This is just one of the many examples of Officer Kruger's dedication to detail. His hard work and persistence are shown in the attention he gives to every case he works. The actions taken by Officer Kruger related to the Vice President of Beck Automotive writing a letter to the City Commission commending him for his thoroughness and professionalism. Police officers rarely receive positive feedback from the community, so when it happens, it's very special. And it deserves attention. It is for this reason I nominated Officer Kruger for Employee of the Month. Thank you in advance for the opportunity. Officer Kruger did a fabulous job, and I really appreciate it. He's been with us now since August, and he has proven his value every day that he's been working.
Wow. Thank you, Officer. Thank you. Okay, we're next going to go to Student of the Month, which many of you are here for. Commissioner McCasco, can you assist me with that, please? Our first student of the month is, we'll get along with this. Our first student of the month is Gracie Montgomery from Mellon Learning Center. Grabbing chin head from the Mellon Learning Center. Malaya Stein from Brock, PS Elementary. Micah Moore from the Children's Reading Center Childers School. Okay, I'll make something happen. Jacobi Nixon, I hope I pronounced that correctly, from Hillcrest Academy. Jaden Baugh from James A. Long. Jackson Azula from Kelly Smith. Piper Aaron from Mellon Learning Center Pre-Graduate. Kiara Huff from Hoesley Elementary. James Peely from Placca Junior Senior High. Haley School crowd from Panaca Baptist Academy. Anne Faith George from Putnam Academy in Beaumont.
Madam Mayor, she would like to take a photo, a group photo at this time, and afterwards she will take a brief recess and then individually take photos with the students, okay? Thank you all for your patience. I definitely let Commissioner Borm come on, Commissioner.
Just continue, please. We'll, we'll, we'll get it.
We're going to take a brief recess, and you can take individual photos, as Commissioner McCasco said.
We look back.
So if we can have all of the students, if we can have all of the students, if we can have all of the students to line up against the wall over here, Commissioner Borm, if you can help me out. Commissioner Borm is going to come over by the wall, and if all of And if all of the students can line up by the wall. Okay. But then, you know, you will have them trying to go back out. You're going to have the traffic going the same exact way. Okay. So once you take your pictures, just follow Commissioner Borm out. So we don't have the traffic going in the same direction. Commissioner Borm, you're going to direct them forward. You got it, Borm.
If we can review the center hour as the students, as the students come through and take their pictures, so there's not much of a delay, please.
Wait, there's more. Oh, that came from somewhere. Okay, folks, please have a seat. We're going to start back up again. Calling the meeting to order, please. Next is Proclamation Blood Donor Month, January 2023, Life South Community Blood Centers.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Whereas the city of Palaca values the health of each citizen in our community, and whereas during National Blood Donor Month, we recognize the life-saving gift of blood donation and the blood donors who ensure their community has a safe and adequate blood supply. And whereas blood donations from volunteer blood donors help patients fighting life-threatening illnesses, traumas, and chronic diseases by donating blood, platelets, and plasma. And whereas blood donors in our community who give to Life South Community Blood Centers help patients in our community as Life South is the sole blood supplier to the HCA Florida Putnam Hospital. And whereas National Blood Donor Month is an opportunity to thank volunteer blood donors and remind citizens of the constant need from blood donations. And whereas the city of Palaca appreciates and recognizes the selfless gift of blood donors who help give many in our community a second chance. Now, therefore, Robert M. Correa, Mayor of the City of Palaca, together with the members of the Palaca City Commission, do hereby proclaim January 2023 as Blood Donor Month in the City of Palaca. And we call upon our citizens to donate blood to help their fellow citizens if eligible. In witness whereof, I am here and to set my hand and cause to be a fixed official seal of the City of Palaca this 26th day of January in the year of our Lord 2023.
So moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, pass him unanimously. Is there a representative here from Life South Community Blood Centers?
Madam Mayor, we have Amber Boynton and Alex Ramirez.
My name is Amber Boynton, and I'm the Regional Manager of, uh, Life South Community Blood Center here in Palac. And I just want to say thank you all for your support on behalf of all the blood donors and patients that need it.
We're going to get, have an update from the, um, Putnam County Tax Collector's Office, Ms. Bridges. Deputy Tax Collector.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I have to say, this is not the first time the room cleared out before talking about property taxes. Again, my name is Brenda Bridges. I am the Deputy Tax Collector, 323 St. John's Avenue, Palaca. First, I want to take the opportunity to thank you for allowing us to come and give you this update this evening. And on behalf of the Honorable Linda Myers, I want to extend her apologies for not being able to be here this evening. So the information I'm going to share to most of you is somewhat common. To some of you, it might be new. So the Tax Collector's Office, uh, occupies three offices throughout the county, one in Interlock and Crescent City, and the office, the main office in downtown Palaca. Uh, so in your packet, there are two sheets. The first one, um, provides the data for the tax year collections. And so if you'll look at the top section, that is based on the 2022 tax year roll. And it is broken out in the first column by ad valorem and non-ad valorem taxes. And then the second column is the parcel count. And those parcel counts vary from year to year based on lot combinations, lot separations, things like that. The total charge to collect is the amount that the Tax Collector's Office is responsible for collecting based on the certified tax roll. And then as you see, the total collection amount, um, that we collect on behalf of the city. The collection rates vary slightly, and they're fairly consistent from year to year. We did provide, uh, three years, that first quarter for each fiscal year. Um, so it does stay pretty consistent. And, uh, you will see that the total charge to collect has increased each year based on the property values. So I know you get a lot of constituents that may call you that have questions about their property taxes or concerns about, uh, where they're at and whether they can pay them. So we know with the economy, a lot of people may be struggling. So also in your packet on the left-hand side, there is a pamphlet, uh, and it is for the Property Tax installment plan. So this plan is one of the best offerings that the Tax Collector's Office can offer to taxpayers. It allows them to pay their property taxes in foreign installments. And you get the same discount as if you had paid those taxes in November. So you must have an application into our office by April 30th. That application is online. It is on our website of putnamtax.com. And I also brought a stack of pamphlets, and I'll be happy to leave here this evening. So if you do have constituents that have questions about their property taxes, please send them to us. We'll be happy to help them. Um, again, that is, uh, a deadline of April 30th to get that application in. And what the process does is the first payment would be in June of each year, and it's based on the prior year's taxes. So your first payment must be made in June. You cannot miss it. Second payment would be in September. And then the tax roll is certified to us. And the December and the March payment then catch up with whatever the difference is based on the certified tax roll. It is a wonderful plan, and I encourage everybody to take advantage of it. It makes it much easier for people to make those payments. They're not writing one check, you know, at one time of the year. It gives them four opportunities to do that. Um, but if you miss that June payment, uh, you fall off of the installment plan. Once you sign up, you're on there until you'd like to come off of it. So if you have any questions about that, I'll be happy to help you with that.
Thank you. Does anybody, you have any questions?
Question, clarification? Bridges, if I understand. First item in the list, the City of Palaca ad valorem, and it said, "total charge to collect amount not collected." And it says 75%. So that's, you're collecting 70 or some, you're collecting, your office is collecting 75% of the taxes that are actually assessed. But that's not the same as the percentage of properties in the City of Palaca that are actually being assessed, thank you.
That's correct. So if you look at the ad valorem amount, so the total charge to collect, and that, uh, amount collected, $2,710 is 75% of that total charge to collect.
Mr. Homs, your mic. Your mic.
Glad it's not just me.
People haven't normally had a hard time hearing the, I know, but. We in the past been told something along the lines of 39% of the parcels in the City of Palaca actually pay taxes.
Then there, that does vary. So it is a very low amount that actually pay taxes. Um, so there is a difference between property tax, and there are a lot of parcels throughout the county that are just assessed like the solid waste fee. And so those properties, based on the value, is under, um, what that, uh, value denoted to pay, to pay taxes. They fall under the, like, if they have homes that. So with those exemptions, they would actually not be paying taxes. They're paying, uh, non-ad valorem.
Thank you for that clarification.
Thank you. Anybody else have any questions? Thank you, Ms. Bridges. Very informative.
So the second sheet in your packet. So in addition to collecting taxes, which is a very important part of what we do. So we also wear a lot of other hats. So we're often referred to as those people at the DMV. And nobody, nobody likes to go there, right? So we are responsible for representing several of the executive branches of government. So we represent Department of Highway Safety, Department of Ag for concealed weapons permitting, Florida Fish and Wildlife, and Department of Health for birth certificate issuance. So the birth certificates is one item we do not do in our Palaca office just because we're close enough to the Department of Health that people can go there. Uh, we offer that service in our branches just because there are a lot of people in the west and south end of the county that transportation is a problem for them to come to Palaca. So all three of our offices are full-service offices. And, um, we, we try and look for opportunities that we can bring along those services. So these are state agencies, but we are your local representative for those agencies. At the top of that page, you'll see a, uh, small table. So we just wanted to give you an example of the number of people, and this data is based strictly on the Palaca office. It does not include Crescent City and Interlockin. So for the month of October, just in the Palaca office alone, our customer service reps waited on, uh, over 4,000 people. That is not uncommon. And in the Palaca office, we can see anywhere from 300 to 500 people a day based on what's going on at a particular time of the year. So I know a lot of people get aggravated when they come in and they think they're having to wait a long time. If you'll look under that table, the average service time is 14 minutes. We have a Q and A system. You come in, you check in. We can, we can block how much time that you've actually waited in the lobby and the actual time that it takes, uh, for reps to wait on you. So we just kind of wanted to highlight those things and remind people of the other services that are offered there. And the data that's depicted in that table is only taken from that queuing system on the Oak Street side of the house where Motor Services is. Does not include customers that are coming in on the St. John's Avenue side of the house that are paying property taxes and things like that.
Thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome. I will, thank you. I will stay around for 10 minutes. I'll go to the back of the room. I'll have some of those pamphlets on the installment plan. And, uh, if there is an office here that you would like for us to drop some off so that y'all have them maybe when you're talking to constituents, I will make sure that you get some.
Thank you.
Thank you.
As per our discussion at the last meeting, we're going to go to City Manager and Administrative Reports at this time.
Thank you. We'll try to cover some of these items quickly. The first item is sort of a point of order, and that has to do with your wishes with regard to the plexiglass dividers that, uh, we've allowed to remain at this point, but, um, the scenario and environment may not be exactly the same as it was when we put them up. Told it up to you as to what your thoughts are, as to what your thoughts are. Told lip to you as to what your thoughts are, as to whether you keep them or you don't, but had the question asked by a number of different people, so I'm, I'm asking you.
Okay, thoughts? So you had the question asked by fellow commissioners, folks in the commission room, just us, I mean, is COVID still going around?
It is.
So I'm not opposed to them still being up just for safety precaution, you know, safety precautions. I mean, I don't think they're hurting anything. Doesn't cost or it takes much to upkeep them, so I don't see any harm with keeping them. So I'm not opposed to them staying.
Okay. Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I mean, I, I think we, we made the investment, and COVID is still present throughout the United States and abroad. So I think we need to continue with them, in my opinion.
Don't matter maybe what.
Okay, and I'm semi-neutral, and COVID does, is still with us unfortunately, and probably will be forever. So at this point, it seems the consensus is they stay.
What about Commissioner Campbell?
Commissioner Campbell, you have any thoughts?
I will echo the sentiments of Commissioner McCaskill exactly. I, I don't, I don't, I'm not, I would like to see them stay up.
They stay.
Thank you.
Next, we have completed the screening of seven city manager candidates, and I'm pleased to tell you that I think we're all in agreement that there are multiple of the candidates, several of the candidates who are very worthy of your consideration. As you all are aware, in situations of this type, delay often means that you lose folks who otherwise might have been interested. So my question is, you've expressed an interest in conducting interviews in bank, the whole, the whole panel conducting interviews. As soon as you can, we'd like to go ahead and get a date set up for those interviews to begin. We've pushed out all the applications to you, I believe. And it doesn't have to be now, but again, some of these folks have applications pending other places, and as I said, the quality of the field is pretty good. I suspect that some of them will end up getting jobs sooner rather than later and didn't want us to miss someone by, by delay.
Okay, go ahead. I know that we have upcoming conferences, but I think ours is later than Commissioner Borum. I think you're flying out sooner than us. So can you share that date? And I don't know what's on your calendar, Commissioner Jones, if it's something that you don't know about.
I was gonna say, I was gonna say, come up with a few dates and push it back to us by Wednesday of next week, so we could go ahead and get a date certain and start on it.
So we thought you'd fly out in February, so next month.
Yes, if, if they come up with a, a few dates, then we can probably pick from those dates, and if it's in.
Okay, so.
My, my earliest date is February sixth, my earliest date.
So we have seven candidates that we have sort of screened and think are worthy of consideration. How much time do you want to allot for the conversation? And of course, you know, this is a fluid process. If you wanna, if you want one, if you desire to have one day of interviews, shortlist from there and have additional interviews, it's entirely up to you. But as I said, there's seven candidates, and we spent about an hour with each one when we were speaking with them. That we being Ms. Thomas, Mr. Griffith, myself, and Ms. Jones.
So my question, are we gonna have to fly in? Are any of these candidates going to have to fly in?
Several of them, several of them are from distances that probably wouldn't be conducive to driving.
Okay, so if we're already at the end of this month, we're already, the thirty-first is Tuesday. Commissioner Borum is leaving out on the sixth. We have to consider that. So it would have to be.
Anytime after the night.
After that, because you're gonna be gone for a week, right?
Yeah, anytime after the night.
So my question is, do you want to schedule one day, two days, one full day?
One full day. I'm for one full day, personally.
All right, so Sunny, if you could help me by Wednesday, getting out some dates when we don't already have commission meetings scheduled or things that would conflict, and we would be then eliminating the period from February the sixth through February fifteenth, is that right? You said, or thirteen, you said one week?
The sixth through the ninth, any, any date after the ninth.
Oh, after the ninth, okay. So Sunny, if you could, then note that we're eliminating six through nine, and otherwise we'll be going from there.
May I ask a question, please?
Yes, sir.
With the interviews, I know that you said that a lot of them are in a place that driving or driving is not conducive more than flying. It, may we offer, because what I would really hate to happen is if we bring seven down in person, and then ha, they have to fly right back if they're a part of the shortlist. May we not offer the opportunity for some to visit via Zoom? I don't think it would take away from the interview process, but I think we need to be wise in making those that come from afar, even, well, we provide them the option, if they want to, they can, but Zoom, I mean, we live in a world of technology, and I just think that we should be a little bit flexible when it comes down to that process. And then when we get to the final, if they are a part of the final, we recommend that they come in person.
All right, so implicit in what you said was that you're gonna have a two-stage process. You're going to interview all seven and then reduce it to a, you're gonna shorten the list from that. Is that my understanding of what you're suggesting?
From what I heard, and if I heard incorrect, please let me know. So if, were we looking to do the interviews that one day and then hire, or will we?
I don't think we decided that.
Entirely up to you.
Yeah.
Entirely up to you.
Because generally, what we have been giving in the past was, was a shortlist, and we had the opportunity to bring somebody back on board if we felt the need to. So that's why we're doing this process a little bit different than what we've done in the past. So kind of want to get a better understanding of what the plan is prior to bringing them in.
I think we have to decide that plan.
That's what I'm trying to do. That's what I'm trying to determine. So if we can make the determination, that kind of gives us if they need to be there in person versus if they have the option to do virtual, and then we do the shortlist. So that's what I'm trying to get to.
Okay, what is everybody else's thoughts in regard to that?
I'm really not in favor of doing the two rounds of interviewing. If we can get it down to a shortlist, either one day or one whole day, I'm in favor of that if my fellow commissioners are, Madam Mayor.
I, up to you.
I, I think if we're going to do that and do it all in one day, then we need to probably do it in person. Is that what we think?
Via off a shortlist.
Well, we have to establish that shortlist, and how are we going about doing that? Are we going to do Zoom interviews and then establish a shortlist? Or again, that would be two sessions, or are we going to do it all at once?
I'm in favor.
Okay, Commissioner Borum, what's your thought?
I think we should take as much time as we need to. If we have to go twice, then I think we need, I don't think we need to rush it. It's city manager is the administrator over the, over the city, and so I don't like to rush it, if at all possible, from my opinion. And my preference would be to have him here in person so that the citizen can also engage and see who we're dealing with as opposed to somebody being virtual. That's just my.
Okay, Commissioner Jones, what are your thoughts?
I have to agree with Commissioner Borum, and the reason being, even commissioners, mayor, when we get in that process, you taking an interview hour after hour after hour for seven hours, you're gonna get fatigued, and we may not be given the attention that needs to be given to each individual. So to be fair for each candidate, I would like to do a, a multiple day, and maybe we have the, the, the first interviews. But it's gonna be hard to bring seven people in and then to do them all in one day. Yes. It's, that's seven hours you're talking about. If you say it took an hour, and that was with three people, now we have five people. I think that we probably need to maybe bring in half on one day and half another day to, to, to thoroughly.
So, so are you suggesting you bring in half one day? Obviously, we can't do three and a half each day, but three one day for the next. And then you guys from there would then select a shorter list to conduct further interviews, or are you saying that you're gonna do one interview and make a choice?
So again, I'll go back and say, just my opinion, I value their time as well and the community's input. Us going off of a shortlist and doing it in one day so that it's not a two-day process, and then it's, it's gonna end up being three days. I mean, this in a two-part process, and then it's really gonna be a three-part. Because you're gonna be, end up going in three or four hours.
Look, look, Commissioner.
It may go over an hour. Who's to say it may go over an hour? So I mean, we're all giving opinions so that we can come up with a consensus.
I think the other thing it factors in too is that for these folks, time is of the essence because they are applying for other positions. So although we want to be thorough and pick the best candidate, we don't want to lose the best candidate while we're being thorough. So we need to balance that out too. And I'm not for drawing, drawing this out for a long process. I mean, how, can we do, as Commissioner Campbell suggested, a Zoom interview of them and then have the shortlist people come here in person, and it would be two days, granted, but maybe that's the way to go? Just my thought.
Whatever the commission wish, wish to decide, but I, my whole thing is I just prefer but in person as opposed to virtual. That's my opinion.
Okay, so we're kind of back to where we started.
But no, how about this? How about this?
Let's take it through the vote.
Wait a minute, one at a time.
Can I get up to him?
Yes, you, you can.
Okay, so to combine both ideas, let's do a two-day process virtually. And then we bring in the people for the final interview. For example, I said two days, that's gonna be light on us as well as the candidate, okay? So you're not gonna have them fly in. We're gonna do it like Commissioner Campbell. We could see them virtually. We could ask a question. From that point, we could actually bring in the shortlist, whether it's gonna be the top three, and they'll come in for the interview, and we'll make our decision then.
And let me be more specific in my reasoning of asking for the virtual. I don't know if anyone has traveled lately, but traveling lately has been a complete cluster. And so we run into the fact, or we're running into with flights being canceled, with flight being delayed and things of that nature. That's the reason why I offered the option of virtual, just in the event flights are skyrocket high, somebody may not be able to get here and things of that nature. I think it'd be a lot more smooth of a transition if we were to do the virtual setting first and then focus more specifically on trying to get those. Because we may have someone that does not have to get on the airplane or can drive or things of that nature. I'm just looking at conditions and traveling conditions as they have been lately. I know I traveled last weekend. I was delayed, and I was flying just to Atlanta. So just imagine coming from the Midwest. If we have someone coming from the Midwest, well, we have snowstorms and things of that nature. So that's the reason why I offered the option of saying virtual until we know that, that someone that we really want to take in consideration to come for the final interview.
Okay.
So my only thought is, I have a thought.
Okay.
Usually do have a thought. One, if we're going to go virtual, I would rather you not offer the opportunity in that round for people to appear live because I think that it will, it could basically uneven the playing field. So if you're gonna do that first round virtual, I would say everybody virtual and not, you do have, you have at least one person I think was from Tampa or somewhere in that, somewhere in that area who can drive. But I think if you're gonna do a virtual round, it should be a virtual round. And, and everybody would, would be on the same kind of playing field. And then, and then if you want to go your second round, I, I share the thoughts of Commissioner Borum. I would imagine you're gonna be looking for a three-year contract or so with this person. You're gonna be living with somebody in a chief administrative position for three years. I think you're gonna want to look him in the eye face to face before you make a final decision to hire.
I, I agree, but I, I think it's a good idea to do it virtually initially and, and get down to that shortlist.
Okay, then we'll go ahead and get two dates, Sunny, for the first round, back to back if possible, so people don't lose context from the ones they interviewed the day before. We'll, we'll plan it for an hour per, is an hour gonna be enough for you? He, Commissioner Jones is right. There were, there were, we, only four of us, right? Asking questions before, and we, but we did it in an hour. We were pretty quick about it. So if you want an hour and a half per person, we can, whatever your thoughts are, it's you.
I, I think an hour is reasonable.
Okay, Sunny, we'll go four hours the first day, three the second. And then, and then once you do that and you decide on what your shortlist is gonna be, we can make the arrangement for the in-person interview, okay?
Thank you.
Good, okay.
Are we all good with that?
We'll, we'll push those out to you then, those dates by Wednesday, and if you can get back to us as soon as possible, it'd be a big help.
Question, do, are we, we got a little buffer time in there because I don't know how this, plan on scheduling, but the, the back, the back, the back. I'm, I think you gotta have a little bit of buffer time in, in between each. Yeah, I'm just.
It's your schedule. Tell me, tell me.
I, I think, because when you just say one hour and then you just run, run them consecutively, then, you know, I'm just thinking.
How much buffer time do you want?
I'd say ten to fifteen minutes.
Okay.
Ten to fifteen.
If you replicate the schedule that we did, like the parasitill schedule we did before.
Sunny, let's keep that in mind, if you would, fifteen minutes buffer between the interviews.
May, may I ask, does the commission prefer mornings or afternoons, or don't just give you a selection of both mornings?
Yes. We're all more alert in the morning, I think.
Morning, we call.
Okay. Great, so we'll, we'll proceed on that. Thank you. Next, traditionally, or at least since I've been here, I think, as city manager, the Hometown Hero Award during the, during February, has been someone that recognizes the month Black History Month. My question to you is, do you have a process by which you'd like to select that hometown hero? Maybe in the nature of you making submissions to staff of, of your suggestions, or how do you, or are you even interested in, in, in continuing with that this year? Last year, I think the mayor made a selection. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think mayor has done so in the past, but I would definitely love to have the opportunity to submit a name. I don't think that's something that we should allow to die out. We have several people within our community that are very much deserving of that recognition or that highlight. I would like to see it continue. I would not like to see it die out.
Okay, so perhaps if you could submit.
Anybody else have any thoughts on that?
I would like to entertain that each commissioner actually nominate someone or present someone for that award. Personally, I would like to see that.
I was, I would recommend it too. I like that.
In person, you're saying, or each one submit a name? I mean, what?
Each person have a pen, a, a.
Nomination.
A nomination, not only want to present someone.
Okay, so you're talking about five hometown heroes.
Five and one, yeah? Okay.
One month.
Uh, one month rather.
Is that?
I don't know. I, I was just still thinking the one person. And I, it's fine that we all nominate somebody and that decision's made, or each of us take turns nominating. I don't know if we need five. Did the mayor not do that once a month?
Yeah, he, it was more than one time, hometown hero. And, and it really wasn't a set in stone time of it happens, but it was periodically that it came before the commission. So the idea that Commissioner Jones, not to be completely thrown out the window, I think it provides us an opportunity for us to divide it out equally amongst the commission to still have, well, we, well, we recognize someone within the community for a hometown hero award.
Yes, may I give historical context?
Sure.
Um, in my tenure as city clerk here with the city placate, it's been awarded twice. One was in October twenty twenty-one, and the next was in February twenty twenty-two.
Okay. And, and question, is there any criteria related to that?
In my tenure, I've not been able to find any criteria. It was selected by the mayor.
I think we need to, as a commission, you know, mayor, I think we need to, as a commission, to come up with some form of criteria, and maybe staff can kind of help chime in on that.
Well.
We also must keep in mind that the Hometown Hero Award isn't just a black award.
All right, so how about this? And I would like to put a motion on the floor for back, Black History Month. Alright, so how about this, and I would like to put a motion on the floor for Black, Black History Month, which is the shortest month of the year. Um, and as a commission, if we're gonna, uh, do anything for Black History Month, can we going forward? Put a proclamation out there and actually do just what I said, maybe each commissioner nominate someone. That we recognize in the community to have contributed to our community, and, uh, that we want to recognize. Um, I mean, that's a thought, I would hope that it gained traction, and, and we can do that. So that'd be something that this commission put out there, and we could do it going forward.
I'm not opposed to that, that's a good idea.
I think this is a good idea, so.
Gotta get a sec.
I, I also think it is good to come up with criteria, so good a motion?
I second.
What is what now?
What is the motion exactly?
Come in the motion, please.
Restate it.
Okay, and we're just doing that for black, for February Black History Month, or are we spreading that out, um? What about the rest of the year and the rest of the folks?
I think that's where Commissioner Campbell comes in.
I think so, yeah, I agree. I think it, I think five in one month is a lot, I think we should spread it out. Uh, yes, I believe we all should nominate people, but I think we could spread it out over the course of the year and do it a little more frequently, but not five at once, five folks at once.
What about every two months?
But, excuse me, I got a motion on the floor.
And then we can modify it if we need to, I second it.
Go ahead, go ahead, Commissioner Campbell.
I think, I mean, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with Commissioner Jones, and I would just like to try to knock one bird out with one stone. Versus having multiple, um, multiple motions. Um, within your motion, would you be in agreement to just say we recognize or come up with a criteria? Um, that would allow us individually, um, within, I guess, within a year's timeframe to have someone be recognized.
Uh, Commissioner, we also have the hometown hero, which you just spoke of earlier, this is separate from the hometown hero.
Okay, I was confused there, you lost me there for a minute, I thought we were just focused on the hometown hero.
Here's what he's saying, okay. Madam, I'm sorry, madam mayor.
That's okay.
He would like for the month of February, each commissioner and the madam mayor to recognize a person. Of color for the month of February.
Who, who significantly contributed to the, to the community, uh, impacted the community in a positive way.
Well, as the remainder of the calendar year, recognize a hometown, hometown hero. That we nominate, but with criteria, am I right, Commissioner Jones?
On a correction, hmm, the hometown hero is separate, Black History Month is just. I have us one, once out of the year, that's one person, the unsung heroes, that's a nominated person. That like, like, like the mayor had it.
So, so Sonny, the motion is on the floor, Commissioner Jones made the motion, was seconded by Commissioner Borum. If I understand, the motion is for February, each commissioner gets to nominate someone that they believe has contributed significantly to the community. For the month of February, and you're calling that award what? What, what are you calling that?
That was a Black History, that is to be awarded for Black History Month.
So in recognition of Black History Month then? Okay, and so, and so that's that part of the motion, has nothing to do with hometown hero then?
Right, well, and now I'm clear, okay.
That's the motion, is that the second, what you seconded?
Us, us, I second, I second.
Okay, we have a motion, the second, and could you read the motion back, please, Ms. Grants, just so we're clear?
Okay, I went back and filled in a couple of times, so here we go. Motion that each commissioner nominate someone that has contributed significantly to our community. We wanna recognize a person of color for February Black History Month. Um, and I need a point of clarity, we're calling it unsung heroes by Commissioner Jones.
That'll be fine. Uh, I wouldn't say unsung hero, but yes, that'd be, uh. We'll, we'll find the name, but yes.
Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion, the second, on the, what was just read, all in favor? Any opposition? Okay, that passed. Now back to hometown heroes.
Madam mayor, may I? Um, should I speak with you later at another time, or should it be brought for discussion what the award should actually look like? Are we trying to make it look like our hometown hero, or?
We can figure that out, we'll figure that out. Um, so hometown hero, what direction do we wanna take with that? Again, in the past, my understanding is that the mayor always came up with those names. I'm not, actually, when I was, when it was mentioned to me, I thought it was better to each take a turn at that, it doesn't need to be just the mayor. Um, and I think we do need criteria, because it wasn't clear to me how it happened. So, all that said, does somebody?
I would make the recommendation that we, um, allow staff to come up with a criteria and present to the commission. Um, with regards to hometown hero, um, I would also, um, request that you speak with someone from the school district. They already have something as, with the criteria for a product or put, I'm not saying that we have to utilize that, but I think that would be a great, um. Something to just kind of follow, to see what they have, in the same net, since it's already something. And those are people who've contribute, um, substantially to, um, Putnam County, so that may just be something that we can piggyback off of. So we won't have to recreate a wheel that's already rolling.
Okay, um, so we have a motion. Second, second, all in favor? Aye, okay, thank you.
So.
Mr. Holmes, do we have anything else?
Yes, ma'am, I'm sorry, but I do. There are a number of issues, as you know, that, uh, are, uh, of, of significance and important to the community. One of them is, uh, the fact that our docs and, and our boardwalk, as we have heard, are, are both basically at this point out of service. So we've been working diligently, Mr. Mr. Griffith's here, trying to get, uh, some help with the doc. Because quite frankly, the doc probably for long term will require, will, will require reconstruction, not, not repair. However, that's a long-term process, we've been trying to get FEMA to, uh, weigh in and look at the possibility of giving us money. But they probably won't give us money for repairs again, because they've done it several times before. But they, they might reconstruction, but we're talking about something that's gonna be months or more. Um, meanwhile, as you all know, you've got your voting season coming up. Uh, you've got, uh, a number of significant bass tournaments that peeled out of our city dock, including Wolfson's. Um, Nefec, Road Havers, in addition to some of the smaller tournaments, and they're gonna wanna use the docks. Uh, and, uh, so I'm gonna let Mr. Griffith, uh, talk to you for a second about what we've talked about doing. And, and we're, we're, we're simply providing you options, this, this is a situation where I don't think it's a staff decision, but we're providing you some options, uh. And, and basically the option is, do we go ahead and do some repairs to the dock, understanding we don't have the money to do a reconstruction, but we can make it serviceable? Or do you wanna wait? Uh, but waiting is gonna mean you have that dock closed for a long time.
Thank you, Mr. Holmes, uh, Mayor, commissioners, uh, we've estimated the repairs. Mr. McMillan and his staff have been working diligently, along with Mandy and this can know, to be in the range of forty thousand dollars to get the docks up and running. Uh, there is an inspection with FEMA staff scheduled early next week, uh, so we have prepared. If you so choose to add the emergency item tonight for consideration, a resolution, uh, with a budget amendment. Recognizing what we expect to be thirty thousand dollars in FEMA revenues, and pulling ten thousand dollars from general fund reserves. To make those repairs, uh, if you approve that, we will get to work tomorrow.
Well, it's now appropriate, an appropriate time to go ahead and add that as an emergency item? I make a motion to add that as an emergency item?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Commissioner Campbell?
Thank you, that's a vote.
Okay, aye, yes, we have an aye vote, okay.
May I read the captions, madam mayor, Mr. Griffiths? Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-three R twenty-six, a resolution of the city of Palaca, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-two, twenty-three. Budget to recognize FEMA revenues for emergency dock repair to, due to Hurricane Ian, and providing for scribners errors.
Second.
All in favor? Any opposition? Thank you.
Nay.
Okay, so that's a four-one vote to move forward. Okay, next, uh, and this should conclude me, or wrap me up for, for right now. We have a need for an emergency item to get authorization to, uh, to, uh, execute a grant agreement. Is that something you wanna address, chief? The nature of the emergency is we have, I think, ten-day turnaround on this, so.
So we brought before you, uh, the request to submit for, uh, funding to be able to purchase additional cameras. Uh, for the, uh, crime, uh, reduction, uh, or re, the crime reduction, uh, and, um. Prevention, uh, the flock cameras we have currently, we just installed, uh, we, the ones we have here was ones that we put into the budget for this year. The additional funding that we, we, uh, solicited through the grant were for six additional cameras. Uh, we were awarded the opportunity to receive thirty-two thousand, thirty-two thousand one hundred dollars to, uh, purchase six more cameras. And under a contract for two years. Uh, and we would ask that we, uh, be able to accept it, we needed to do it as an emergency item. Due to the fact that it had to be accepted within a ten-day period, which would put us outside of the next meeting.
And that's a no contribution from the city?
That said, no contribution from the city, it would be a hun- hundred percent through the Bureau of Justice Assistance, so Bureau of Justice Assistance.
Motion to accept this as an emergency item, add this as an emergency item to the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you.
I have a question, so you say two-year contract, contract with who and for what?
The contract is with Flock, Flock is the company that provides the cameras to us. It, what we have to do is you pay for the cameras monthly, the cameras, uh, are basically, um, summer cameras. And if for some reason we feel that they're not doing what we need to do, then at the end of the contract, then we can, uh, do away with the cameras. If they are beneficial to our community, and address the issues that we put forth, and, um, we can continue on with, with the additional contract at the end of the year.
Are they the tag capturing?
Yes, the LPR, the LPR, as well as motion activated cameras.
Go ahead, Commissioner.
No, you finish up, I'm done, I'm bad, I apologize.
So, what it, is there in additions to ju, uh, capturing the tag? Do they capture any, uh, you, you say movement, but what I was saying, like, uh, sets of crimes been happening, is happening.
So, so yes, it allows us the ability to search for different methods, whether it be, um, the individual who may have been riding by on a bicycle. Whether it be a car that was committed, they used in the commission of a crime, um, any description we put in there, we may not have a license plate or anything like that. We can search, and if they came across one of those cameras, it gives us opportunity to further investigate for more information for our investigation.
Great.
Commissioner Campbell?
Um, I guess my question would be, who's determining the location of these cameras?
So the location of the cameras is being determined, uh, by the police department, as well as, uh, depending on what property is bad. Whether it's just, it's the right of way, city's right of way, or if we have to utilize, uh, something from, uh, uh, one of our electric companies. Whether it be a Clay Electric, or FPL, a Power pole, um, depending on where it has to go. Uh, the action site, um, for strategic purposes, it's, uh, the main location, we made decision is the police.
Okay, I would like to see that these, um, cameras and just are spread out through the community and not so much targeting in one area.
That is correct, that's what we've been doing so far, um, and again, we are looking at, uh, different, um, like we, uh, mentioned. And when we brought it up, different organizations with, through the community to partner with, to bring in the cameras, so that the cameras are equally spread out throughout the community.
Thank you.
Point of order, I think you put on the item for emerg, as an emergency item, I don't think you approved it.
May I read the caption, madam mayor?
I'm sorry.
May I read the caption this night?
Yes, please.
A resolution of the city of Palaca, Florida, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an testament agreement with the National Policing Institute. And the Bureau of Justice Assistance Award number fifteen PBJA twenty-one GK zero three nine four two RURA. In the amount of thirty-two thousand one hundred, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-two, twenty-three, three budget, and providing for scribners errors.
So move, I second.
All in favor? Any opposition, sorry?
One more question for you, are they removable? So if you put them in one location and determine it, say for instance, uh, you have them somewhere, and you figure it's a high crime area. Could you relocate one of those cameras that's put out?
We could relocate, we'd have to call our company, and for a small fee, I believe, being seventy-five dollars per camera to remove and relocate.
Okay, thank you, thank you, chief.
Alright, so that, that answers my question.
That, um, concludes the items that I wanted to bring to your attention.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Thomas, do you have anything?
No, thank you.
Mr. Griffith? Ms. Tucker?
Yes, ma'am, I'd like to give a brief update on, um, the status of the grants with the city. So since twenty sixteen, staff has, um, managed to receive forty-five point eight million dollars in grants for the city. Within the last two years, we received twenty-five point six of those million dollars, and that's all I've got. And you have a printout of that report.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. McMillan?
We have two short update presentations, if Sonny would put them up on the screen for me? Good evening, Commissioner. The first of which is just an update on an unexpected project that we had, uh, kind of forced up on us in the Sixth Street intersection. Uh, St. John's Avenue within the St. John's Avenue Streetscape project, uh, during the excavation of that intersection. We had found that, uh, one of our other contractors had located a older storm sewer system for us, placing a water main through it. Um, so we could not progress, uh, with construction of that intersection until that was repaired. Uh, after assessing the stormwater system in the intersection, it was found that it was, uh, approximately like eighty years old and in extreme disrepair. The majority of the pieces were broken, uh, you can see we are breaking ground, both our utility staff and our street staff, about half of our staff were on site during this project. Um, and I'm actually proud to say that many of them did not have prior experience in this nature of work. Um, but they were able to successfully complete it with only a few hiccups, uh, which is very impressive. This is in, I would say inhospitable conditions to learn something like this, but they were successful, I'm very proud of them to do that. Do the next slide, um, you can kind of see the excavation, there's a lot of piping in the way that, uh, we weren't aware that was there. We had to work around, the, uh, the site was flooding continually, I had to pump that out, uh, there's clay and bricks and any, anything you can imagine. Um, so this is them removing some of the material surgically, not destroying the surrounding, uh, infrastructure, do the next slide. Kind of go through this, um, again, they're trying to break apart some of the already broken material, we found the previous repairs on top of this, uh, that were done. At some point in the past, the repair was the equivalent of just dumping, you know, six inches of concrete on top of the existing pipe. Um, so that is, that's all removed, everything that's in this intersection is now up to modern standards, keep going. Uh, again, our staff, you know, you're setting the pipe in here, uh, addressing our six inches of concrete, um, and hand-built, uh, brick structures within the intersection. Um, so, you know, we've kind of made a guess, and that's the age of this system, uh, based on what we were finding in it. The water picture here, it actually eroded part of the bricks in the structure, that's how long it had been flowing, so we have some erosion happening. Uh, we were also able to find it through the next slide, some artifacts, uh, in a black cup bottle, and a model A Ford hubcap, we're in the bottom of these pipes. But no, they've never been in there, uh, we were able to climb in there, our smells in, and pull them out, it was kind of fun, it was a learning experience for all of us. Continue, this is when I was able to get some pictures of inside of it, uh, as you can see, we've got some joint separation and intrusion from the experience. Uh, you know, not just the brick, but the rest of the pipe as well, and sort of take on materials from outside, so it's, it's a happy accident that this was found. We're able to address it before we put all the papers in that intersection, if we continue. Um, so, and some of our staff kind of being these, and they're working really hard, keep going. Uh, they can find more repairs and breaks, just kind of exploratory around, we've got an eighteen duct tank, uh, a ten-inch water main. We've got an eighteen duct bank, a ten inch water main and irrigation lines and electric conduit. Our street lights all within about five feet of each other, which we had to work underneath of to support at the same time to not collapse the TDT communications duct bank, which you would have all heard about because no one would have internet services downtown. So if we continue, again, they're working very hard to try to get this nine foot sticker pipe in and around all the structures. They had to remove some abandoned pipe out of the way. Probably forty or fifty year old cast iron water main that was abandoned previously in the mud. Again, creating excavation large enough for us to work safely in there. We keep going. We found that a lot again, again, a lot of the piping that was in place was already damaged to the point where they could just lift it apart. The only thing holding it together was gravity and soil pressure on the outside. And again, this is them, you know, kind of dismantling the existing piping. Keep going. So we installed roughly sixty feet of fifteen inch polypropylene culvert pipe during this project. And again, this project spans, you know, the entire intersection from what we're assuming to be two eighty year old brick site-built structures. So we are confident that going for me shouldn't have any issues in this intersection regarding storms who are at least in that spot. So this is our hiccup Friday evening. I got a picture where they had just left everything. They put some soil, a couple thousand pounds around it, secure it for the weekend. We anticipated some rain. We did not anticipate the amount of rain that we got on Sunday evening, which was about two inches in the span of an hour. So this pipe is buoyant, it's filled with air in the ribs. It floated up and then excavation filled in around it. So Monday morning, our staff is a little upset, but they soldiered on and re-exploded it and fixed up the pipe again. If we continue, you can see it's been reset. That Monday morning, they were out again. We had to wait until Wednesday for a flowable fill to show up. So that is basically suspended sand that allows us to maintain adequate compaction. The material that was excavated here could not be reintroduced into the excavation because it was full of bricks, clay and on students. So if we continue, you can see the flowable fill going in, install fifty-six cubic yards of excavated flow fill in the excavation. Believe the material cost in that was less than ten thousand dollars. We had a quote for an outside vendor to come in and actually complete the repair for us. We saved about twenty thousand dollars in labor with our own staff learning on the job. Again, very proud of them for that. We are too.
Thank you.
Just finishing pictures before we turn the site back over to the contract. It's actually grading, finished grading this now, that's all level. And they should be proceeding with laying rock in the intersection shortly. So should be moving rapidly. We've had one more presentation.
So that was just wearing there.
It's just old bustle, correct?
Just old.
So. I think I might have typed along that. Then it's got the Sixth Street change stormwater repair. That is actually the River Center. Previously, we addressed some roofing repairs that needed to be made. Those were made yesterday by our contractors, so we're releasing terror pro to continue with modern mediation process. We've addressed the, I guess, deficiencies in construction with our contractor. You can kind of see. If you want to go back one.
Do you have a picture of the trouble spot?
Yeah, so this is one of our trouble spots right here. This is the elevator shaft, but we've got some fiber tape that have been pulling up. Fortunately, the way this roof is pitched, a lot of the water goes directly into the elevator shaft and pools right there. It allows, you know, for that fiber tape to come up. So we've reinstalled fiber tape, the ceiling that we'll have to maintain. But hopefully what this will allow us to do is have the water, whether evaporators rain out of that area before it makes its way into the building. This is the mechanical flashing that they've installed. And I just can't hardly see in that picture, but you can kind of see like maybe six inches back from the gutter. That was a flashing that was installed over a butt, a parapet wall. We needed a sealant in a base wire over that that we'll have to maintain again. But what that allows to do is keep the water from going underneath that aluminum flashing and going down into the interior of the building. If we continue, you can kind of see, you know, the, even the roof coating had begun to degrade off of that due to sun and weather conditions. We keep going on that. Afterwards, you can see now that that is all sealed with a color match sealant and a fiber tape application that spans the gap on the flashing back past the exposed rebar in the roof and to the pristine roof deck. And again, this is something that we have to maintain. There were also some other roof leaks that there were talked around the terminus, the gutters that were allowing water into the building. And some corners, corners in this case are difficult to flash properly, so we had some water intrusion in that area. This is an expansion joint, a brick behind our gutters. It's a top and the bottom of water was able to pool at these locations and come into the building. These two joints are the only joints in the entire building that were not talked at the time of construction. They are now talked. We identified that. These are maintenance items, but as long as they are maintained, we should not see any water intrusions at these locations.
What was the cost of those repairs?
About four thousand dollars for the roofer to come in. It did have two year warranty, which carries us, I believe, close to the contract maintenance period for the building.
Four thousand dollars could have saved us from paying fifty-seven thousand dollars to.
Maintenance, correct. And address these deficiencies.
And, and doing the job as opposed, because my understanding is that's not the first time that has been an issue. Yeah, so getting the right people in to do the job is, you know, what we need to make sure we do it just once and do it right first time.
I'd like to recognize Mr. McMillan, who I call McGyver, working with Mr. Griffith.
Yes.
They're doing a great job in, in in detecting problems, correcting problems, saving money in the process. So I think we all can be very proud of the way this, this department's functioning right.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Absolutely.
Thank you.
And then, and then, you know, it's also a good thing that the citizens get a chance to see the work that our staff is doing, the work that they're doing in a safe manner, as well as helping to save dollars where it makes sense. Different things along those lines. So we just thank you guys. We can't thank you enough for all you do.
Thank you again.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. And the visual is very helpful.
Yes. Thank Commissioner Jones for help. He, he made the recommendation to push this up, I think, to the front of the meeting. So that I think.
Right.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Chief Shaw?
I just have a few items I just want to go over. I handed out the crime stats for twenty twenty-two for the nervous crime stats. And as you can see, we work up total violent, not violent offenses, up in property offenses, but overall over reduced by negative sixteen percent. I'm able to answer any questions that you may have for it, if you have any. Here in, we went on, I'll go on and move on. Want to give update on our Pau basketball league. A Pau basketball is happening, starting back up this Saturday, the twenty-eighth at nine AM will be held at CL over turf gym. It'll be from nine AM to roughly about three thirty in the afternoon. We have right now fourteen teams with a hundred and seventy basketball players and thirty cheerleaders. So we are very excited about our basketball program that will be happening, starting up for on Saturday. And we'll be running for eight. And then I wanted to just touch basis with you on some recent cases that we had and the arrest that we had from those cases. Our suspect, Akira Litter, in the South fourteen street homicide was arrested, turned herself in on January fifteenth. The warrant was obtained by Detective Colton Lee and placing the system, and she turned herself in on the fifteenth. Suspect Daniel Coley in a shooting on December twenty-ninth on North twenty-first Street was arrested on the fourth of January. And again, that was also conducted by Captain Williams and Sergeant Lee. The last thing is, I didn't get a chance to mention it, but from the, our first three block cameras that was put in a place earlier in the month, we were able to obtain a tag that alerted on a stolen vehicle. We were able to locate that vehicle, arrest that individual and return the stolen vehicle to the victim. And that's all I have.
Thank you. Taylor?
Ma'am, just wanted to update the commission on what's happened in twenty twenty-two with the park department. Through our industrial training contracts and plan review, we brought in a hundred and thirteen thousand dollars. We've completed about four hundred and twenty annual inspection and VTR inspections. We've done over two hundred pre-fire plans that help our crews understand the building's layout. So when they come on scene, they have an idea of how to work in that structure. We've tested all of the hydrants and we've, well, we've tested three hundred hydrants and we flowed all, all of the working hydrants to make sure that they work. We do that over a five year period, make sure that they all work. And we go through and test them all individually. We had about a ten percent increase on our call volume. We're at four thousand three hundred and fifteen calls per year of twenty-two. That's about ten percent over twenty-one. As you guys remember, we sent some crews down for Hurricane Ian. We are now trying to get reimbursed for that time. So we're looking at about fifty-four thousand dollars coming back into the coffers for that to help pay for our responders down there for over a month. We have received about sixty-six thousand dollars in grants for equipment. As you guys know, we've got the SCBAs on the ARPA ramp. That was about three hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars for SCBA. And we completed fifteen fire safety education programs in schools and daycares.
Can you spell the acronym?
Yes, that's right.
Oh, I'm sorry. Let's move contained breathing apparatus.
Thank you, sir.
Those are the ones we got earlier, late twenty-two.
Those are the three hundred thousand that we, three thirty?
Yes, sir. Three hundred and twenty-seven thousand.
Nice investment.
Yes, sir. Keeps us safe.
Thank you. Mr. McNair?
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner. You are McNair Airport Manager at Blackadder Municipal Airport, AKA twenty-eight J.
Thank you, sir.
So a couple of quick things. So expect to invite probably tonight or tomorrow for a small ribbon cutting, celebrate our completion on the new tea hanger storage facility at the airport. So instead of doing a advisory board, a meeting, we want to kind of bring folks together during that exact time. Just kind of do a good photo op, kind of show some improvement at the airport. Secondly, we are continuing to prep for our annual operations inspection, inspection. So every year, we got to go through the process that our Department of Transportation, you get our operating certificate. So a lot of airfield stuff going on and hoping to have a good inspection.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Then you're standing, Mr. Cutler? In anticipation?
Shout out a snippet about the golf tournament this weekend. We have seventeen teams already signed up and the weather should be nice. You was here last year, you know, the weather was like thirty-two degrees at noon. So all right, looking pretty good. We had several sponsorships and it's all of our Facebook page, so you can reach out to see the sponsors that are there. So we're hoping to have a good turnout and everybody's welcome to come out. If you feel like you're a golfer, give us a, still take a couple more teams. All right, now. Going into code enforcement, this is just really like a sixty day, the day-to-day snapshot, but you'll see in the master hearing, it goes through September. But in the last sixty days, there's more or less on one code enforcement. We have been ninety, ninety-seven inspections. And the reasonable suspension confirming violations of voluntary compliance or free hearing or compliance at all. Got to go out into the city and just do the inspections and make sure that things right before we go to the next slide. The master hearing, instead we had fifteen cases presented to the master hearing and we take the month of November off because of, we run eleven since we got a twelve. So that's a pretty good number. Again, this is one code enforcement officer at the time. We have recently had another one, so these numbers would increase in the next day to day report. We have had a quarter some violations, possibly generating approximately about eleven hundred dollars a day fines. For his funds, we're leaning searches, uh, over the, throughout the day, we have probably about ten to fifteen calls a day by lean searches. Either full closure on houses where people buying property, just trying to sell property or violations of those. So we answer calls and those are going over ten to fifteen minute calls because we got a bunch of questions that come with that. But that's that. So I think you move real quick. And that's extended compliance. Over the last sixty-five to seventy days, we have a couple of cases closed and compliance. And as you see, some of the properties are before and after pictures. Next slide. And this is sort of part of our downtown restretch, but we're trying to get downtown back to the bright, nice, everything used to be. And you can see some of the before and after pictures of those properties too. And that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Daniel? Dennis, sorry. Had a moment, moment of congestion. I'm so cold.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and Commissioners. I wanted to take a moment of time, I don't want to be out of, out of order, but wanted to take a moment to recognize one of our board members who's up for reappointment. Pastor Dickers has been on the board and directors of the Gas Authority since nineteen ninety-five. He's part of the reason that we have such a strong knowledge base and experience in our, in our Board of Directors. And wanted to thank him for his service and let you all know the effect that he's had on our board.
If you don't know, that's also Command Sergeant Major Dickers. Has forty years in United States Army.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Jones?
Madam Mayor, Commissioners, we just finished our blood screening events from one ten and one twenty-four. We had a participation of eighty-four of our employees. I'm at current for my last medical update, we have a hundred and fifteen employees enrolled in our insurance plan, which leaves thirty-one individuals that did not participate. So we may have to, our metrics change every month. So when people are coming on or going off, I'm in order to meet our highest and max goal that we can, we have to participate as twenty-five percent. So we're very close. People may come up to insurance, people may be added on, and if it calls, we may have to hold an additional healthcare, um, blood screening just to get our numbers up. But overall, we had a very good participation. I want to congratulate our winners from our fifty dollar gift card drawings for those days. I'm Justin Hale, Deborah Armento, Eddie Cutright, Jill Kaiser, Latifah Felder and Marcus Wilson. If any of those individuals are in your department and have not yet picked up their gift cards, they can pick them up in Human Resources. And at the same time, we're still pushing for our wellness exam for all our employees, as well as their dependents that are over the age of eighteen to be completed by three thirty-one, which they will receive a twenty-five dollar gift card for each individual completion. So if it's the husband, wife and an eighteen year old daughter, that's seventy-five dollars to that household of all three, which will be given to the employee to give to their family. So we, we encouraging all, everybody in the department here is to please get your employees and let them know about this. Flyers have been sent out to be posted so that we can, and this is also another metric of how we can capitalize the increase on our health insurance that we need to make.
Thank you. Ms. Walsh? Ms. Walsh?
Good evening, Miss Madam Mayor, Commissioners, Lisa Walsh Planning Director. This presentation will be a little bit longer in that it's a compiled compilation of all of two thousand and twenty-two and the projects that we worked on. Next slide, please. So one of the first ones was the um annual certified local government report. That's something we're forced to do every year, and it makes us eligible for added points and different grants that are administered by the DEO and the DOS, Department of State and Department of Economic Opportunity. And one of the next projects is Aspen Dental. This is at the former King Buffet site on State Road Nineteen. The demolition is complete. They are expected to put up a new building similar in square foot, square footage, but much nicer than what was there before. As you may have seen, our rated checkers on Krill Avenue is under construction. And the next, at the next planning board meeting on February seventh, there will be a capital improvements element brought forward for consideration. That's something that we're supposed to be doing every single year for our plan. But I don't think that's been done in a while, but it will be done this year. Next one, please. You may have driven down, well, not the last couple of weeks, all the way down St. John's Avenue, but that's also under construction, the avenue itself. But the cottages at St. Jones is out there. There are many broken ground and under construction. There's a hundred, supposed to be a hundred and ninety-four duplex market rate rental units out there across from Woodland Point. This is something that just came in a couple of weeks ago. It's called Crystal Cove RV Resort. They are proposing approximately four hundred RV sites. This is at the site adjacent to the existing Crystal Cove property where the marina is and the hotel. That's going to be a future, this application is for future land use and rezone. Next project is Eleonos Drive Through Coffee. It will be in the plaza where the Dixie is, right? It's just immediately south of the racetrack station. And that is under review. The plan set is under review. Next one, please. This is something that has been in process for a little while. It's an RFP for an update on our cultural resources survey for the historic districts, North and South. Those biz were received on the fifteenth and it will be presented to you at the next commission meeting. Next slide, please. This is something that you'll be hearing more about later. That's also been under um the process for a number of months since about impact ease. Next slide, please. This is something that's been in under review for about a couple of months now. A lot of people excited about it. It's supposed to be former Golden Corral. They are proposing to demolish that building and construct a new Longhorn Steakhouse. Next slide, please. This project was opened, actually completed and opened in late November. And Scooters Drive Through Coffee, I understand it's become very popular with a number of people on State Road Nineteen, just about north of St. John's Avenue. Next slide, please. The Taco Bell has been a long, drawn-out kind of project. It took a long time to get the review complete. It's taken quite a bit of time to get the renovation, which uh almost complete. There's a few minor punchless kind of items that had to be addressed. And that should be done shortly. They widened the drive-through aisle and closed off an entrance that was coming off of that side of the street. Next slide, please. Factory Supply has gone in and done a complete interior renovation and added a greenhouse in their outdoor space and kind of reorganized that as well. That's almost completed. Also, Walmart has proposed a seven thousand square foot addition at the western edge of their store for pickups, for grocery pickups. So they, they aren't adding any parking. They're just kind of reconfiguring it and so that they can perform that service in their operation. And that's also under planning at the time. And one of the most, another exciting project is Wawa at the corner of Street Road Nineteen and Street Road One Hundred. This last week, they began their demolition. They broke ground. They've got their, in this picture, this was last week at the pre-construction meeting. They are moving right along. So this, as I mentioned, was a summary of the two thousand and twenty-two planning activity. We took in some of these numbers you've heard before in my presentations, is two hundred and twenty-four cases. We brought in over forty-two thousand dollars in case fees. And of those cases, eighteen of them were single-family residential proposals, which are either completed or in process at this time. We did about thirteen annexations, six of which were for water and sewer uh connections for that purpose, for water and sewer. We had fifteen lot splits. We did thirty-one certificates of appropriateness. Forty-eight new business tax receipts came in last year, which is kind of exciting. And we also increased our BTR revenue from about seventy-five to eighty thousand to a hundred and two thousand. That was something I told you about. Staff is working on chasing down renewals, late fees, that sort of thing. It's working out pretty good. They're doing a great job. Next slide, please. And something I wanted to share with you, my, some of these are things that, that have been under your direction. And some of these are my ideas for upcoming projects. Some are almost already in process. One of them is a comprehensive plan update. I'm preparing to write an RFP for a consultant to help us with that. We, most places have a long-range transportation plan, which is something that's integral to having good circuit, traffic circulation within town. The state and the Water Management District require us to have a water supply plan. I've been reminded of that by the Water Management District a couple of times this past year. And um something else we had to look at is concurrency, which is how are we doing compared to the level of service that we've established in our comprehensive plan? So for example, in transportation, roadways operate at a certain level of service. And sometimes they, they're graded that way. They are graded that way. Um, in the building area of our department, we are looking at a zoning code update. That's the idea behind the, well, that's not the only idea behind the comprehensive plan update, but out of that update will become the zoning code update. And that will hopefully happen in two thousand and twenty-four. And then we are currently, just yesterday, we had a very, um, what did Mark call that? A beast of a plotter, plotter scanner and printer installed over in Eddie Cutright's area. And that will be shared between all of our departments so that we can print out large format maps, banners, that sort of thing. And the main impetus for this was to be able to scan all the old documents that we have rolled up everywhere that we're required to keep, but there's been places where they're not in the best conditions and they need to be done digitally. So that's something that we're working on this year and next. Um, we'd also looked at, we also would like to look at improving our planning website and making improvements with our mapping systems and the quality of our maps that we use. Next slide, please. That's it. Thank you.
It's, well.
Um, did I miss anybody? Have we covered every department? No, no, we're going to get to public comments, sir. I'm sorry. Oh, keep putting a beautiful, um, Ms. Grace, do you, would you, do you have anything to offer to us or tell us what's going on?
It was really cold to begin with.
Yes, it is.
Uh, Nicole Grace, uh, second director, keep putting a beautiful, two oh five North Second Street, five quarter, three two one seven seven. Um, I just want to say that our Arbor Day event went uh fantastically and the um St. John's River State College reiterated how um proud they are to partner with us for uh, for the events. Um, the comment, you know, was made that, you know, here, that, oh, it's nice that they're taking on, you know, all of, you know, all of that work with crap. And they said, no, it's, we have a city that's coming to us and celebrating. So it was a very positive event and the tree looks great. I go out there almost every day and I get to see it. So fantastic. And that's why I have the plus you have some questions for me.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you, Tom.
Mayor, I, I would just like to commend staff. I think that this gives you an opportunity to see when someone asks you what city staff is doing. I think you have an idea from this, this program and presentation that there's a lot going on, a lot of progressive um moves by your staff when you hire good people and, and give them the freedom to move. It's Walsh, Mr., right on down the line. I don't want to call somebody else because I'll, I'll leave somebody off, but I think we all have a justifiably, can be justified, be proud of the, of the job that your staff's doing right now.
Thank you, everybody. Um, now we're going to open it up to public comments. Speakers are limited to three minutes. Are you? No action will be taken on these items that you bring forth. Um, and wait, if you're here for a specific agenda item, we'll get to that. We'll get to that agenda item. Um, Mister Zany Best, Zany Best.
Good, uh, good evening, everyone. My name is Zany Best. I'm here representing everyone in our county.
Address for the record, Madam Mayor. I'm sorry. They, yes. I didn't hear you. Address for the record. I think you was about to do it. Okay.
My name is Zany Best. I have a mental illness and I've been, I've had a mental illness for quite a while. And I see in our county here, we just disregard people with mental. At this point, not that I'm angry, I'm a little disturbed. After all the work I've done over the years, uh, it seems to be this pressure actually held. The children were here earlier. These are the ones we're trying to look out. The babies that are in school now, the younger ones are going to suffer from mental illness. If we don't get the services in our county so that we can take care of them, if in fact, God forbid, anything happens to them like me, working one day and a month later I live up in a hospital. I didn't know it was coming, but that's part of my life. Uh, we have a system in Florida here and it's around the country and around the world called the International Clubhouse, psychiatric clubhouse, where they get you everything that you need if you're diagnosed anytime in your lifetime with the mental illness. Now, I'm saying this again, I will say, uh, we have a place in Florida, or places in Florida that have service for people with mental illnesses, but it's not here. I say why, what is it years, you know? We had everything set up where you had a, a international clubhouse set up. Then the director died two weeks before the center was open. Then Stuart Marchant scooped it up. Stuart Marchant is doing things Stuart Marchant's way. That is not the international clubhouse. Anytime you have mental health issue, you have mental health issue, you take it to the clubhouse, they will do something, legal or otherwise. Housing, uh, transportation, uh, anything that you could have a problem with, mental housing, the international clubhouse does that. We'd like to bring one here into our county, but some kind of way, I guess, I've been doing it ten years.
Thank you.
And it costs money.
Yes.
Uh.
I think we're about at your three minutes, though. Thank you, sir. Reese Bird Waldron.
My name is Reese Wald. My address is Avenue Nine, nine Washington Avenue, Hastings. And I am the director and owner of Little Sports Learning Center, just recently opened this preschool that opened at the Campbell Building. And I'm just here tonight to invite the commissioners to sign and see the new preschool, um, get a tour of the Campbell Building. We've done some extensive renovations. And we'd love to invite you back and just to see what's going on in our school. We are open from seven forty-five AM until six fifteen PM, by date.
Thank you.
Wouldn't it be the best time, though, to come by? Should we schedule a time prior to?
You can.
Anything?
If, if the classroom, there'll be a sign on the door that says, come back.
Yeah, I, I don't prefer, because if, if, if you're in the classroom, then I hate to just.
No, I put a, not if I'm not available.
I wouldn't know if you, unless we ask your staff, are you in a meeting? So.
I'm, I'm available pretty much in need.
Okay.
And I've been. It's a great possibility.
Absolutely. I would, I would love for you to come by and see what we're doing. It is a preschool. It's not a daycare. It is a plastic unit that we're doing to prepare.
Thank you. Um, Kevin Sykes. Please give your name and address for the record.
Thank you, Commissioners. Kevin Sykes, two-five-six-two Glenfield Drive, out of Springs, Florida. So, uh, while I'm not here locally, I am at the advisement of Mister Eddie Cutright. Been discussing with him about the placement of an ice vending machine at the Riverfront Park, which is to serve all of the fishermen in the village, to serve local areas. It's an excellent place. It's needed. Uh, and basically, um, it's a small footprint and what it does is it also creates an income, paying the city for, for leased land. And uh, there it's, you know, basically one of the most beautiful places in all of Black. I also have some brochures, if you'd like them, just to take a look at what we're doing. It's very simple. It's very forward, pretty simple.
I have.
Sure. Questions?
Um, Ms., Mister Holmes, um, question, and, and we, we mentioned the ICE ICE unit at the um river, at the river, at the dock area. We, we, we're still in a, I guess, contractual agreement with PBM putting the boat, boat house marina. So uh, my question would be if we entertain something like that, how would that uh maybe impact the area that is already defined? We just haven't, we haven't closed out of a contract that we're currently in place. So we'll just, I don't know, we need to speak on it now, but if there's just some, some. We really appreciate you for bringing this forward.
Any other questions?
Is somebody going to speak to?
I don't know. I don't know if we can speak on that now, but.
If, if I could, just mention that uh, we are attempting to finalize the deal with PBM. We've asked, reached out to them and asked them to, you know, to come back and, and let's try to finalize the items that we had uh kind of agreed in concept to before. Uh, we all know the boats have not, the second boat or boat number one, which is the second boat, has not been, it's passed by the Coast Guard. But if we were to do something like allow a third-party vendor to go on the riverfront with an ice machine, it would be something we'd have to put out in some form of a, some form of RFP package because it is public property and you, you know, you'd have to, you'd have to solicit invitations from, from anyone who wanted to, to make an offer or make a proposal. Uh, and then, and then choose from those uh invitations. And so I think that our first question for us to, if, if PBM enters into the contract, then we define the uh Marina Operations Area, or I think is that what we called it? What do we call it? Marina Operations Area? We defined that area and we gave them control over it. So we'd have to make sure if we were going to put one down there, that we didn't put it in their Marina Operations Area. And also we'd want to, as a matter of courtesy, talk to them to make sure they weren't going to put one in uh because of the fact that we've been negotiating with them for a long time now. Um, so uh, and then if we did that, it would have to, if we did put one in, not in their Marina Operations Area or in it with their permission, it would have to be an RFP process.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Tom.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Specific or general? Uh, is it up for an agenda item or? Okay. Okay, please come up. Name and address for the record.
I'm not going to call them that. Eighteen Laurel Streets. Uh, I don't know how many people are aware of what's happening west side, West Lake, or Westview Cemetery. But kudos to whoever had initiated the cleanup of the cemetery. I knew I made a request, Matt, and I think late, late November, December to have some of the branches, et cetera, cleaned up. But it's been a remarkable change over the past two weeks in that cemetery. And I hope it continues because it does look like there is some more work that can be done scattered throughout the whole property. But kudos to whoever, whether it be the commission, previous now, or someone on staff. You're doing a remarkable job getting that initiated. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's, it's very good to be able to walk around that cemetery and start seeing some light and beautiful things.
Thank you so much. Could you also fill out a card, another gen, another card, please? Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Okay, we will get to that. Thank you. Did you fill out a card? Thank you. Mr. Carr? And please fill out a card specifically. Okay, you, do you want to speak to a specific agenda item or in general? Okay, please come on up then. Sorry. You had a specific item. But, well, that's one.
Hello, Commission, and welcome, Mayor. Sam Carr, I'm at 108 Riverside Drive, St. John's Road in San Mateo. And 250 years ago, a other nerdy, hippie-type guy headed out from Pennsylvania, and he wound up here in Platteville, and that was William Marchant. And after he finished his trip, he wrote a book, and it became America's first literary masterpiece, and that's what we call Travis. And so it's, as a result of that, Platteville has endorsed, or has embraced Marchant here and created the Marchant Trail here in Putnam County. And it really started in this room, with some of the folks that are sitting in this room, getting it started and everything. And so, we have now the Marchant Trail here in, in Putnam County. We also have the Marchant Folic that's coming up in April, and that's what I wanted to be warning about, is that we're back. And we will be back, and so we want to be sure to have the city involved, and as you already are, with our, our eighth annual St. John's River Marchant Folic. Also, a part of that is our Folic on St. John's, which is the education program. And this year, we will pass 3,000 children out onto that river using your Pride of Platteville Riverboat and, and the St. John's River Center. And so, just wanted to let you know that we are alive and well, and we're back. And we'll be having our Friday night VIP Folic again this year, and so we'll be asking y'all to speak to us at that time. Okay?
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment? Ms. Kitchens?
Allegory Kitchens, 1027 South 12th Street, Platteville, Florida. I wasn't going to speak on this, but as time has gone on, the lady sitting beside me was here for a specific agenda item, and she's had to wait two hours. She had to get up and leave, she couldn't wait any longer to talk about the agenda item. I would point out that normally, we don't have this many people, the audience is only one or two. The people that watch whom can catch the comments from the staff on Zoom. It's very rare that we have an audience that's going to sit here two hours and listen to what's going on in city business. While I commend Commissioner Jones on the idea, I think it has not worked, because these folks here are for a specific agenda item, and they've had to wait for two hours. Now, one of the ladies that needed to speak up and spoke up at the planning board meeting since we had to leave, I just want to point that out to you. And would you please consider putting these long comments by the staff back at the end of the meeting, when you have a full room like this, when people hear a specific agenda item? Usually, when there's a large crowd for a specific agenda, in times past, other mayors have had that agenda, that item moved up, so that the people wouldn't have to wait. The other thing is, and I keep forgetting to tell you folks, for the last three or four months or longer, it's probably August, the TV in the foyer does not work, there's no picture, the sound is only like three inches from the speaker, which is behind the screen. So, when the room is crowded and people are sitting there, we cannot hear or see the city commission meeting. So, I would appreciate it if you could get that fixed at some point in the near future. And thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Kitchens. Anybody else present for public comment? Mr. Mahoney? Did you fill out a card, Mr. Mahoney? Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Mike Mahoney. I moved here in March of 2016, and I'm glad to be here. I am here to let you know how much I am looking forward to the completion on the maintenance and repairs of the boardwalk that acts as an underpass below the west end of the Memorial Bridge, also known as US Highway 17. For those that are handicapped or visually impaired, to avoid crossing US Highway 17 on foot offers great peace of mind. You do not want to confront traffic, because you never know what they're going to be doing on that road. So, again, I'm looking forward to the reopening of this boardwalk out of that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mahoney. Anybody else for public comment? Thank you all. We want to close public comment. Moving on to the consent agenda. Are we all?
Motion. Any items to be?
Does anybody have any items they want to pull?
Motion to accept items A through E on the consent agenda?
We have a motion. We have a second.
Yes, I want to pull A for discussion.
With the exception of A?
Yes.
Okay, motion to accept items B through E on the consent.
B through D.
B through E. I'm saying E.
We.
You want to pull E?
I want, I want to pull E.
Oh, I'm sorry. So, motion to accept items A through D on the consent agenda.
Okay, we have a motion to accept A through D. Do we have a second?
Second?
Okay, questions? Do you want to bring up your issue?
No, we're going to vote on it and we can talk.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition? Sorry. Okay. Commissioner Warren?
We just, I guess, is there anybody here to talk about the lease of lien on 194 Mango?
Is it appropriate to read the caption, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
A resolution of the City of Platteville, Florida granting a release of lien assessed to 194 Mango Drive, Platteville, Florida for complaint number 20190002, authorizing the satisfaction upon full payment of the lien, which is attached to the affected property and providing for scribners' heirs.
So move.
Second.
Commissioner Born, he has that lease right there, 194 Mango, that was a 2019 case. It was a, they're like bigger, they were supposed to be in the yard at that time. When we previously visited, when we took over code enforcement, we had the complainant call there, trying to see what was going on with the case. We found out we had no recommendation, no evidence that the bigger was there. The young lady since then showed us approximately proof that the bigger was moved on the time in July. And since that was the only evidence that we had, it kind of go by, and we kind of went with that, and that's what that $1,550 fine gave. I assume it was going to pay that out if it was happening.
So, so did we capture all of the administrative stuff?
That's in that. That's in that.
I'm good.
Motion to?
She's.
I can't offer a motion, I was just asking.
You already have a motion and a second.
Right. So, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
I forgot we opened it up.
Yeah, that was discussion, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. On to regular business. For number seven, I have to disclose ex parte communication. The representation for the owner did call me, it wasn't really in regards to this particular property, they own others in the city as well. We had a very brief conversation, because I made it clear I could not discuss any of it. But again, I'm just disclosing that, even though it wasn't specific to this property.
So, you want to, you caught up the item for, on the agenda, then, item number?
Number seven, adopt resolution 2023 R22, authorizing a lien reduction, release of lien for 801 St. John's Avenue. Ms. Kryan?
Thank you. A resolution of the City of Platteville, Florida granting a release of lien assessed to 801 St. John's Avenue, Platteville, Florida for complaint number 2021024, authorizing the satisfaction upon full payment of the lien, which is attached to the affected property and providing for scribners' heirs.
So move.
Okay, that case number 2021224 was brought into, I knew it was on March the 23th, 21, 2021. We sent out a warrant, a warrant notice of voluntary compliance on March 26, 2021. Notice of hearing came out on April the 9th, 2021. We re-inspected the property on April 19th, 2021, found that the property was still out of compliance. I do have pictures, it could be in your package, if not, I can provide it for you. We then took them to the hearing, the hearing gave sixty days to come into compliance. A subsequent reinspection came on June 21, 2021, finding the property was still without totally compliance. We had a few improvements that were made, but it was still not totally compliant, i.e. the audit was still in disarray, but has some issues that still there, have some grass in the grain. We noticed that the wall, the whole of the wall was kind of temporarily fixed. It was re-inspected, it was re-noticed again for the second hearing of December 2004 to December '04, 2022. The plaintiff or the person was on Zoom, so his representation was there. He was still out of compliance, and at that time, he gave sixty days to break it back into compliance. And as of January 3rd, 2023, he has came into compliance. And if you do the numbers of that now, that's 2021 to January 2023, and that fine was five, fifty-five thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars. We did a property value, a reduction of property values, so over the forty-eight thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars, with the conditions and things, put in his lien reduction. Myself, my staff, the city attorney, decided we were giving a fifty, fifty percent reduction, and then plus administrative fees came up to twenty-four thousand, one hundred and eighty dollars.
Thank you.
Mayor and Commissioners, I ask that the policies that you adopted, or this commission adopted previously regarding consideration of lien reductions be included in your packet. So, those policies are in your packet under this item. I'm sure you've had an opportunity to review them, and staff have essentially addressed each of the policies in the written document or the written packet that's in your, in your book.
That's staff, staff recommendation?
Yes. Yes, Commissioner.
And, and Mr. Cutright's staff recommendation is, you believe it's in conformance with the policies that the commission had previously adopted?
That's correct.
As I recall, your, the policies, after, after listing a number of items, state that the reduction should not be for less than, more than fifty percent of the lien, unless the value of the property is, value of the lien is more than double the value of the property.
Right, that's correct.
So, you went with the minimum under the circumstances, which means fifty percent of the lien plus your administrative costs.
That's correct.
Thank you.
So, that, that's your policy that you adopted, that what we're basically saying is, that's staff's recommendation. Now, as I recall, in those policies, you do have the ability to reduce for hardship, is that correct?
Yeah.
That's correct.
You do have the ability to reduce below the twenty, fifty percent for hardship. Just, I'm just stating for your information.
Is the individual present?
Yes, we're just going to call the representation, representative for the property owner? Okay. Oh, we have the property owner as well. Could you please come up and give your name and address for the record?
Madam Mayor and Commissioners. My name is William Corzo, I represent the property owner, the actual property owner, he's present as well, would you like him to come forward also?
That would be fine. Yep.
So, as, as you may know, the property is owned by a corporation, but it's essentially a family corporation, which is headed by my father, Hector Corzo, again, I'm his son, and I'm essentially the family attorney, but I handle matters dealing with the family and some of the corporations of the kind.
I'm sorry.
All right, Mayor. He had identified himself with his address and everything.
Yes, could you please give your name and address for the record?
Yeah, sure. William Corzo, C-O-R-Z-O. My current address is 13250 DeBoer Avenue, Orlando, Florida, 32827. So, at this time, I don't know if the code enforcement will be there.
Yes, they are at this time, so you're free to speak with information.
So, thank you for the opportunity to let us speak. So, in terms of the code violation and what the suggested lien is, first and foremost, obviously, we've come into compliance, so even to consider a lien reduction, we have to show that we've come into compliance. We've done so. And I think we either, I think we even went above and beyond fixing a lot of things that weren't even mentioned in the initial complaint. So, we removed the entire fence. We painted the entire exterior of the premises, we cleared it all up, we added new doors. So, we went above what was required of us. It did take us some time, but we did eventually come into compliance. So, we have to look at what the goals of the code enforcement. The goals are to come into compliance, like the magistrate said at the hearings. These people don't want to take your money, they just want to get your attention. So, they got our attention, and we did what we needed to do. So, the goal of that is not punitive. And it looks like the recommendation to pay twenty-four thousand dollars seems somewhat punitive. We've been, though we don't live here in this community, we've been involved in this community for over twenty years. We have other properties in this community, one of which is a church right across the street from this property that we're talking about now. We have had a relationship with the pastor and the congregation there for numerous years. We've went above and beyond to take care of that property, to make sure that they have everything that they need. We've even, during the COVID times, we helped them with rent, we replaced the air conditioning system with them, and that was all at a great cost to the corporation and to our family. We did that because we liked this community, we enjoyed our dealings here, which began, again, over twenty years ago. The city manager did make a valid point that the board can't consider a greater than fifty percent reduction if we bring other information to light. So, I submitted an eight-page document, I don't know if you all received that, setting forth not only our history in the community, but all the things that we've done to improve not only this property, but as well as other properties and our involvement with others in the community. Now, one important thing to consider here is that as a partner in the community, bringing and maintaining these properties into compliance is, is one part that we're aware of and that we've achieved, and we're constantly working towards. The other part of it is that we've actually been trying to work with the community in maybe offering use of some of the other properties to the benefit of the City of Platteville in exchange for some consideration for this lien. So, we know that there's a lot of construction going on downtown, we have another property downtown where we've been offered parking at a low cost or no cost leased to the city in exchange for some consideration for this particular lien. Aside from that, during this entire process, we've been working with local investors. I call them investors, because they're locals that are interested in continuing to develop the downtown area and other areas of Platteville in, in terms of divesting our corporation of these properties and letting someone local in the community willing to move these properties forward. If a lien of this size is imposed on the corporation, it's going to create a substantial hardship in one, either us moving these properties forward or our ability to move these properties forward with these local investors, some of which are present here tonight. And some of the board members may be aware of those, or in any event, these are things that I would hope that the board would take into consideration. I believe that you have the discretion to take these things into consideration, because ultimately- I believe that you have the discretion to take these things into consideration because ultimately these will be for the benefit of the city. Also, if you look at the violations, these violations, though it did take some time to get them done, were relatively minor in nature. Um, again, we are compliant. Um, at this point, we would be willing to pay any administrative fees and other fees that obviously were needed to, uh, police these things and bring them to hearing. Phone enforcement officers go out there and do all these things. Uh, we would obviously be willing to pay for that and for reasonable fine. So at this point, in line with what I set forth in my request for a fine reduction, I ask on board the lien reduction less than fifty percent. We're, we're here to answer any questions also.
Thank you. Okay. Any questions? Or I didn't have a public comment to?
My, my issues with, um, Atlanty landlords, whenever people from other communities invest in the community, if you're going to invest in the community, if you're investing in something, it should not fall to those states, in my, in my opinion. And I know we take great pride in.
Okay, please hold your applause, thank you.
We, we take, we take great pride in Palatka and we have, um, set forth a lot of time and effort in putting in policies to help not only get the, uh, the, uh, attention of people or investors or people who care about this community like we do, but we want people to make sure that they maintain these properties because we're shining the gem. And as you can see, we're making some significant investments, not only in downtown, but throughout the city. And so, uh, we're shining the gem and we're gonna need help from all of the people who want to invest in this community. So for me, uh, it would be hard for me to say yes to a, a, a reduction below what the staff has already made major. Uh, have put a lot of work in, a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of hours. So, but I like to hear from the rest of the board, from my opinion, but I, I, I think we need to, whatever we can do to help, but we, if, if there's some lapse, then maybe we might have to come back to whatever it is, if there's a consideration, in my opinion.
Thank you, Commissioner Blum, Commissioner Jones?
I have two questions. First question is, sir, um, what hardship you actually?
Thank you.
That, that you feel that will qualify you for the hardship that you're asking for? Uh, fixing an air conditioner in another property, which you probably get some type of revenue when considered at a hardship? So is there anything else that you consider, you want us to consider as your hardship? First question.
Okay, please give your name and address for the record.
Yes. Our lien entries, U two eleven fifty fifth Street, we're in Sparkville, we're in three three seven. I, um, have worked with the code officers here in Palatka about two decades on these properties. And I think that Mayor, you have in fact called me after a storm when this particular property had a canopy taken down on it from the storm. And we were very responsible. So I wanted to, to be very clear that we are not irresponsible people that don't care for the property here. I've been to Palatka in the last fifteen years many, many times to take care of these properties. I used to work with a code officer, Elizabeth, for many years. Um, then it was Tracy and more recently when David became the code officer, I passed this stuff off to Will because he's a little closer and so he is learning his way through. But I've never had a code issue where it came this far. I was always able to come here and manage this stuff with the city and with the code officers. So I just want to be very clear about that. We have been good stewards of our properties here and it's not just the air conditioning. When the church needed a new roof, we got a contractor out of Leesburg to come up with a new roof in the church on that building. When they, termites, had a termite, had the building tight. We have been very good stewards of our properties here. I worked many years with Mosley, one of the other properties is a Palatka resident. Took care of the property, the grass was for us. So we have had some relationships. After COVID, it was much more difficult. We have lost our contact with a lot of the folks here and now we're re-establishing those relationships. I think what Will is trying to say is we have established relationships with some people who really are have their heart in the downtown, in the redevelopment district. We want to work with them, we want to lease the properties or sell the properties, go ahead.
I thought Will said that you all became active during COVID.
No.
He pays rent and everything during COVID. Oh, I'm sorry.
Okay, I can tell you during COVID, Dr. Corzo, I, we were way busy with people to get to Palatka, that's just how it is. I, I would like to tell you it was different, it wasn't.
Could you please come up to the mic, Mr. Corzo?
I think my, my only point with COVID was that, uh, the tenants at the church were experiencing some hardships that we helped them with during that time. So that, that was my.
Thank you.
And, uh, Commissioner, to answer your question, they, the, uh, the hardship, the hardships, um, in, include the loss of some of the relationships during that time, uh, the, uh, you know, just the overall makeup of, of who runs this. Again, you know, it's my father, he's getting a bit older, he, he still needs, they drive four hours to get here. They've been doing that for the past twenty years, so just to, to follow up on what Ms. Andrews says, we have been involved. I know this sounds like a lot of the locals might not think so, but we, we have, um, I think more properties here that we have kept up with and have been doing the right thing with. And some of these owners due to some, um, circumstances like storms or vandalism, which was a, this, which was a big problem at the this particular property, we've had to deal with that. Um, also, I, I believe the board can decide from the hardship issues, they could, you know, we're not limited to that. The board's limited to other criteria, which I'm trying to set forth here, which we've been trying to consider in Palatka. And, and we can consider other, other criteria.
Yeah, I do. So to make it clear, you, you only stated loss of relationships. You indicated that is your hardship. I want to give you an opportunity to be clear there.
Well, that, that was one of them.
So the second one is, what do you plan to do with the building? And like Commissioner Blum was speaking on, you know, I would like to see us start when we either reduce these liens or fines. We have a commitment from the property owner. What it's going to be and what, give you a timeline to start doing these things. Um, it may be too late for you, but I think that's something we're going to have to initiate. Uh, if we already have that in place, where are you with that?
Commissioner, um, I just want to remind you that just before you tonight is the lien reduction, not any prospective plans that they have for the property.
Well, that's some information I would like, no, you're just sitting and just, and let us sit there?
We all want to know that, but right now we can't address that apparently.
Well, well, I actually did, um. You want to give me something else?
Well, yeah, to, to answer your question.
You get asked that.
Have plans to do either ourselves and we're willing to make a commitment in writing or give you a timeline to get that done. But we've all worked, we've also been this club for working out a deal with local investors so that they can, they can do that. So if this, the lien of this size was imposed, that will drastically, um, hinder those prospective outcomes. So we, we, we know that and I appreciate that question, but we can give you that commitment. Or you can, I, I will tell you that we've had some, we, we've actually had contracts in writing that we're very close to getting signature. This is something that they have, we've been working on in the past few months and something that I see getting done in the next few months as well.
Thank you.
So my question is, so, so my question is, it sound like you're leaning more toward selling, you want to reduce the lien, so potentially sell it. But, uh, in, in my opinion, I, I I think the, whatever the staff has recommended, I think we can go with that and maybe, uh, pro-rate over a period of time, give you, uh, give, get, give you a particular reduction over time, but not, not to say we're going to reduce.
Thompson, can you clarify what we can actually do and not do?
At this point, the, what we have, the commission has before you is a lien reduction. Staff has, you have established a criteria, staff has applied that criteria to this exactly. So now you're bringing in, um, outside facts and, um, considerations that were not a part of the original consideration and not a part of the policy.
Right.
So I just like to remind you what is before you.
Thank you.
Thank you for clarifying.
Land me to that.
Commissioner Pascal? Okay. Commissioner Campbell?
I'm ready to move forward, staff has made the recommendation, we have set, um, and came up with a criteria. I think we just need to go ahead and bring this to a resolve.
I make a motion to go with staff recommendation.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm going to open it up to public comment. Ms. Roach? Oh, I'm sorry, did you want him, excuse me, Mr. Corzo, Dr. Corzo, do you want to speak? I'm sorry, could you give us your address, please?
Yeah, East, uh, one three five three two seventy-four, W U N seven on Florida, three, three, seven, seven, six.
Go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to, uh, the opportunity to, uh, address you tonight. We are, we have a lot in common, we are essential workers. I am an essential worker for forty-two years. I have been working seven days a week as a psychiatrist in Pinellas County. And for the last pandemic, I only took five days off in the last three years because of the, they, they, because of the need to provide treatment for all my patients and all the, all the, uh, facilities I provide services. So that was leading to me tremendously, my ability to take care of other issues. And not only that, but the fact that, that we hired, uh, workers, local workers, and they did not fulfill our requirements. They left, they took cover, so we lost them. So we had, we had to bring workers from other areas to do these activities here. We are still looking for workers here, I mean, they were difficult to find a worker. So, as, so that's why we want your, your, your local corporations to work together. We are committed to, uh, to, uh, working here, we had paid taxes for twenty-three years. We had never had any income from any of these properties. Zero. We had been, never rented any place except the church, but the church has, uh, they got a lot of, we have been working together with them and giving them a lot of breaks. But all the other properties have been zero income, everything has been expensed to maintain the properties. And, uh, uh, we are asking this for you to consider that as a, as a part of the lien reduction or, or whatever you want to call it.
Thank you. Okay, I'm opening it up to public comment, Cheryl Roach? Please give your name and address, Ms. Roach.
Cheryl Roach, three twelve Dodge Street. Firstly, I have to ask Council, am I limited to comments only pertaining to the lien? Or since I am in public comments, may I speak freely?
Public comments so that you can.
Thank you very much. Firstly, I applaud.
What was being, no two-year insults or cursing or anything like that, right?
I promise.
Thank you.
Firstly, I applaud food enforcement for their two-year effort to get to this point pertaining to this property. Um, it is a challenge, obviously. The abuse and neglect this affluent family inflicted on this property and four twenty-four Emmett, known as Melon House, is horrific. The only way in my mind to release this lien and the lien on the Melon House is for the Maria LLC to admit the accountability and find the sale in a one, St. John's and four two four Emmett. I will not comment on their other properties because to my knowledge, there have not been any code enforcement violations filed, but I'm sure they should be. Please, I implore this corporation and family to allow somebody to revive and care for these abandoned, neglected structures. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's hold up on the applause, folks, please. Um, Bernard Mian? Name and address for the record, please?
Uh, Bernard Mian, eight fifteen Laurel Street. Uh, I have to, uh, sort of agree with Ms. Roach on these. I've been resident for just over two and a half years. And I, I sort of get out in the neighborhood every day. I see how these properties have been derelict for a number of years. I used to travel from here in previous life, uh, and, and would see the deterioration. And I just don't understand how in mid-December the magistrate got his or their attention and all of a sudden, poof, everything starts getting cleaned up. Why has it taken so long? There's no reason, we can't use COVID, we can't use these other excuses. You've had the properties for twenty-two years, they've been derelict for, like I said, I know two-plus years, as Ms. Roach stated, probably longer than that because I know she's been here longer. And there's people in this room that have seen the properties, you know what they look like. And it's just a shame, and I, and I am the same way. There should be no reduction in lien on any of the properties that are going to be up for a reduction. It's a slap in the face to the residents and to the city. If you cannot take care of your properties, get rid of them, put them in the hands of somebody that can take care of them and that will take care of them. If you've been investing in this property in this county or this city for twenty-two years, those properties should not look like that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment on this particular topic? Ms. Kitchens? Thank you.
Allegro Kitchens, ten twenty-seven South twelfth Street, Lake of Florida, uh, former city commissioner. And I, I served on the codes enforcement board from nineteen ninety-eight until December of two thousand and five, when I selected into city commission. Uh, I think it's very important we don't show special favor. Uh, I respect the fact that the Corzo family says they had hardship. But in my opinion, as Mr. Jones asked, I didn't see any hardship presented. They stated earlier in the statement, they did have a developer waiting, that they wanted to work with, waiting to buy this property. And then later on, they said that they planned to do something with it themselves and the, you know, needed a break on the money. I understand buy property for investment, it's a good thing to do. They've had this property over twenty years and other properties which are not under this lien, but are under other liens. Uh, but if you buy a property for an investment, when they bought it, the market was low, now they can sell it for a very good price and they can surely get enough sales price to pay the codes leader to make up for the codes lien. Uh, so I think you need to take all of that in consideration, they haven't shown any hardship that I can see. And, um, I wish I had the hardship of having been a psychiatrist for the past thirty years. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anybody else for public comment on this particular agenda item? With that, we're going to close public comment. Okay, we have a motion in the second on the table. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, passionately. Adopt resolution twenty twenty-three, uh, twenty-three, authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an attest contract for three years with professional firefighters of Palatka. Ms. Kryms?
Thank you. Resolution twenty twenty-three, R twenty-three, resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an attested contract or email with a professional firefighter, supply a local two nine nine two, providing for an effective date, providing for scriven reserves.
Go move.
Second.
Discussion? Think they're coming in.
Um, Madam Mayor, we, as you know, we've been, uh, in the midst of negotiations for a number of months, um, and, um, I think that through the good faith negotiations of both the firefighter union and the city, we've come up with an agreement that staff will recommend to the city. And my understanding that the firefighters' union is also in agreement with it. So, um, it's our, it's staff. So um it's our, it's staff's recommendation that the commission approve the contract.
Thank you. Anyone else? I'm gonna open this up for public comment. Anybody have a public comment? Closing public comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposition?
I voted that's it, aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion direction, resurfacing streets within the downtown potable project area. Mr. Griffin?
Thank you, Mayor. Commissioners, I'll keep this brief. Um, this is more of an update and request for some direction. As you know, we commenced phase one of the St. John's Avenue street state project. Uh, that project was broken up into at least the minimum of two phases, maybe even more based upon what I have to tell you tonight um because of limited funding. Um, it is estimated that to complete the project as originally designed would take approximately two point three to two point five million. After looking at your budget and where we stand today, we have an excess of four hundred thousand in Better Place reserves and an excess of forty thousand in CRA reserves. Those are the only two funds that we would recommend utilizing. You can do the simple math and see that we are falling quite a bit short. The only other option is to seek external funding, which would take a number of years, or to consider pledging uh your Better Place or CRA for debt service. So I wanted to present those numbers to you. I can tell you that you bring in in excess of four hundred thousand in your CRA downtown annually. Uh, with the current tax base, you bring in just over a million dollars annually in Better Place. So we're not seeking any formal directional, just wanted you to know where we stood from a budget perspective on this project. And given the time, uh now we can bring this up at a later meeting if you desire.
Okay, thank you, that would be great.
Yes, thank you.
Discussion direction, Riverfront Boardwalk.
Good evening, Commissioner, again. Lady, I'm sending a little powerpoint for me. So the purpose of this discussion and direction is to present the commission with two options for your consideration for the Riverfront Boardwalk. Presently, it's closed and after numerous assessments from staff, we've identified some poor areas and some fair areas based on conditions present. Right now, we have it closed based on the conditions there and liability associated with those conditions. We would like to strongly suggest moving forward with completing some remedial repairs or temporary repairs to allow the city to open the uh, the boardwalk again for public use. And out of these areas, we've got a more detailed list of the deficiencies on the next slide with quantities and footages associated with them. And in the following slide, a big price associated with those, which we believe to be around, there are actually pictures, but again, a price associated uh with those repairs is roughly seventy thousand dollars, which we currently have budgeted for um to complete repairs along, you know, this program. If we continue to the next slide, it's actually a hole I put through this thing with my foot this afternoon while we were reassessing it. But if we continue, we've got some structure, some pictures, uh and the only reason we're actually concerned was with the decking and the hand railing attached in substantial from our standpoint, substructure is, is serviceable at this point. If we continue, we've got, again, your two options that we are strongly suggesting we, we move forward with. One, um is that, you know, performing temporary repairs to the sum of roughly seventy thousand dollars in one hundred and twenty days and then submitting for grant applications, which have a timeline of one to three years for a more substantial rebuild from a capital replacement standpoint, um of which there are some grants listed below. Option two is to not expend these seventy thousand dollars and keep the boardwalk closed while we await potentially a grant match or other grant funding opportunities to do a, a whole remake of the uh boardwalk.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions from this with the name?
Yeah, I had one question. Uh, that's, is, is that the same thing that we're talking about when uh Mr. Griffith came up? Okay.
He, he was talking about the commissioner, the docs.
Right, okay.
Mr. Griffin was addressing the docs. This is the boardwalk.
We got the temporary, temporary um block, block of for the, the route through from one side to the other, right?
Right.
Okay.
Correct. It is temporarily blocked and we got another lawsuit playing this from someone who alleges that they fell in the boardwalk in twenty twenty-one.
I just wanted to also bring up that Ms. Tucker was um at a DOT workshop today regarding some of these uh grant opportunities. Uh, Ms. Robinson, uh the DOT representative for our area brought it to our attention that we were gonna need a resolution to submit for their TAP program, Transportation Alternative Program. Uh, so we have that prepared for you tonight to add as an emergency item because we need that resolution authorizing staff to submit the grant application. Uh, but I just reiterate what Mr. McMillan said. We are recommending option one, where we use the amount that was budgeted, the seventy thousand dollars to replace the four uh to fair areas, open the boardwalk back up, buying us some time to seek the funding to hopefully put in composite decking. And Mr. McMillan can answer questions about the lifestyle of composite versus wood, if you so like.
Thank you, Mr. McMillan.
But you're not gonna use composite for the repairs?
No, that's.
Right now, to keep things simple and straight, the seventy thousand dollars is, it's a patch.
Yes. The composite for the future.
Right. Your composite reconstruction would involve you being successful and getting some significant money to, to accomplish the task. Significant meaning, I don't know, be fifty, three hundred?
Close to a million dollars.
I'm sorry, a million.
That's for the composite?
Yes, for the future.
Correct.
And we can get grants, you say, potential grants?
Potential grants.
So the seventy thousand is just gonna go to the areas you pointed out that's bad?
Correct.
So that's open for access again?
Right.
Yes.
I think it's a, I think it's a worthwhile being, based on what it would take to do the entire boardwalk because, again, keeping it, keeping it down, um safety is key. I mean, you think about from a safe, safety aspect of it, uh usability. I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna, it's giving us a little gap time to be able to get to the, the, the big repair, i- in my opinion, uh image. Been down for some time, I mean, quite a bit of time. And who would know when we would have that funding to be able to get this thing back up and going? They've already done an assessment and it looked like they got quite a bit of good stuff out there. And so uh I think moving forward, that would be a great thing. And then utilization, we got festivals, we got bikes, you know, all these different things that depend on this boardwalk. So I think seventy thousand dollars is just probably a drop in the bucket. What would the benefit you wanna get?
Okay, thank you.
But what, what about the, the, the main docks where um I mean, I, I, I was a little confused until you put that rendering up. Okay, earlier we talked about the docks. I thought we were talking about the, the dock where uh.
We did talk about. We talked about this earlier. Earlier, we discussed that earlier.
So, and that's what I said. No, dude, I was.
Yeah, we did discuss that earlier.
Right, there was a thirty, thirty, forty thousand, there was a forty thousand, what Jonathan told me.
That, that would address both the fixed dock and the floating dock in the vicinity of the boat ramp. The earlier item you discussed and approved.
But this is strictly about the boardwalk.
This is the boardwalk under the bridge.
Bridge.
You remind me, what was that first repair, how much was? For the.
Forty, forty thousand.
Forty thousand.
Get money, we could, we got some potential money back, I think thirty thousand back over that commission.
We hope.
We hope.
I said potential. But I mean, it's worth that for the community, in my opinion, for the use.
Um, I, I will say, as somebody who cycles and walks, we need the boardwalk open. Go ahead. I'm sorry, Mr. Son.
I'm gonna go on the record to say I'm a bit uneasy. Um, I was one of the ones who brought this to the attention um and the severity of it. I know that we're looking to um make something happen while I want to. Uh, but again, I just don't wanna do a patch job. And when I walked it, um, it was, it was horrible. And so I wanna know with this seventy dol-, seventy thousand dollars, that it's gonna give us a sound structure and not just something that's going to um temporarily fix the patch that sometime, couple of months later, we're gonna be back at square one. So I just wanna go on the record to reflect that I'm a little bit uneasy if this is not gonna be something, we're doing something just to appease versus safety.
Mr. McMillan?
So the intent of the temporary prayers would be to address current safety concerns. There's a maintenance component associated with all these assets and that is continuing the expense that we have to absorb. But the seventy thousand dollars is something that would bring the existing structure back up to a safe and, uh, I guess, transversible path for our citizens um and allow us to open it while we await future funding opportunities to do a, a, a more holistic rebuild realistically of the, the surface of the uh boardwalk.
Thank you.
So, so we kind of pay now, pay later because as the city manager, I won't say attorney, say uh lawsuits are coming. We opened it up, I walked it as well and I sent pictures in. Um, and we opened it up and then there's opportunities for some people that's looking for those kind of opportunities to, to sue the city as well. So, you know, we're talking about litigation if it's not fixed in all totality. It's happened. But I'm, I'm with spending the money to try to fix it, but I just see another angle.
Dale, would you be coming up with a some form? And I realize staff is limited and you guys are handling a lot of different chores. But if you do spend, we spend, the city spends seventy thousand dollars to repair it. Um, it's wood, it's in the sun, it's in the elements. Are you going to have some form of periodic and programmed inspection program that you can put in place with, with maintenance? Where you have a board that pops up or you have that sort of thing? Can you, is that something that's doable?
Absolutely, it's already in the works.
All right.
Wow.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Anybody else have any questions from Mr. McMillan? I'm gonna open it up to public comment. We have some pods. Ms. Kitchens?
We just give her a stack of.
I'm still the legal kitchens, ten twenty-seven South twelfth Street, Black Florida. Uh, looking at these options, I think option one, I agree with uh what the staff said and Mr. Holmes. Option one is the logical one, it's the rational one. It's for somebody having an accident, they had some accident recently, they crossed the line, they said do not cross, and it's all taped off. If people are gonna have accidents, we're gonna plan them. We had one at the property appraisers office where someone sat in a wooden chair with four legs on it and they rocked it back and forth and then they tucked it over, sat down beside it and claimed that it had fallen over with them. And they sued the county and they lost. However, I think option one is the best one to go. You will repair the boardwalk, you'll have it safe and you'll have it open so that all the folks who want to use it will be able to use it. Option one is logical and it's a no-brainer. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, Ms., Ms. Kreider?
Linda Kreider, live at one twelve Iowa, East Calaca. And I'm thrilled to see that this has been finally addressed. Uh, very professionally met today with uh your new public works director and Jonathan and Eddie Cutright. And we all walked in and yes, uh Dale put his foot through the board. Uh, there is, uh, as he showed, those red dots were the places where the uh new, the reconstruction needs to be done. The other aspects of the yellow places are fine. Uh, have been done recently, as recently as last year before the basket. So I think that seventy thousand dollars is put to good use. Thank you. Uh, so in the red areas, uh the yellow area and then those two red areas is where it has to be primarily addressed. Um, also, Jonathan mentioned getting a uh resolution that I think that would be able to go forward with one of the grand projects that is um they need to have in, I think, before your next meeting. So I would encourage you to also pass that to, tonight if you can as well. Thank you very much. I think option one is excellent and I think we have plan.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Carr?
I'm Carter, away from Riverside, that's been so much. And uh you know, the, the reason this boardwalk is here is for safety reasons. And uh Mike was up here earlier and he is uh impaired with sight and hearing for him to cross that highway. And that's why they, that's why DOT built. And not only that, but we are uh, I'm a, I'm one of the co-chairs of the Putnam, of the Putnam County Waterways and Trails Committee. And we've been talking about this for quite a while. And uh in our past meeting, we had members of the Florida Greenways and Trails, the Office of Greenways and Trails was in our meeting and so was a member of DOT. Both of them supported or pledged with support uh renovation of this thing on a permanent basis. So the money's out there, you have to be smart enough to go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. McLean? Okay, I, Sunny, you're gonna read Mr. McLean's letter to us, please, or do you want me to read it? You don't have it?
No.
Okay.
I mean, I probably can get it in my email, if you'll give me just a moment.
Okay, I'll read it.
That's cool.
I'll give it to you. Um, Dear Mayor Correa, over the years, many citizens, including trail users and leaders, have assisted the city with maintenance of the boardwalk trail and a memorial bridge and see it as an important asset to our Palaca Trail Town accessibility and regional trail connections. We understand the boardwalk trail has been closed and the city is working towards solutions for maintenance. We appreciate the efforts of the city staff, commissioners and the mayor on the repairs and future maintenance. Members of the Putnam County Waterways and Trails Advisory Committee and the Citizen Support Organization, Putnam Blue Ways and Trails, are interested and available to assist the city. Areas we can help include workdays, fundraising, obtaining design help and research into sustainable materials and grant ratings. So Stanley, and thank you, Craig McLean, Vice Chair for Trails, Putnam County Waterworks and Trails Committee, advisory to the B O C C, to the Board of County Commissioners. Thank you. Thanks, Mr. Yes. Okay.
Very.
Any further questions?
No, I just wanna commend them for the work that they've done, um, put in and the consideration for getting it back online again.
Do we have a public comment? Okay. Sorry. Name and address for the record?
Nicole Graves, one fifteen Red Hot Trail, Black Florida, three two one seven seven. Um, as a citizen, as a citizen, I was coming up Third Street and um pedestrian walkway was stuck. I actually was in the middle of the email uh to, I have to contact B O C C. Uh, but it was stuck at fourteen. So if you see the red hand, that's fourteen, that means you have fourteen seconds to get across the street. The light was green. So I know that I see a lot of um, one of the local photographers videotaping people running those red lights through Reed Street in the morning and other times of the day, but we also have some other issues. It is dangerous and I just wanted to say, as a citizen, I really support um option one. And I think it's a well-considered plan and having looked at it for all of my ten year with my current position, um, just walking it, um, it's, that's what it was. It was uh maintenance things. We had issues that came up like COVID, but it's, I think he's nailed it. So this is for option.
Thank you. I'm gonna close for the conference, I neglected to do my apologies. All in favor?
Aye.
Do we make a motion or just?
Do we make a motion? I'm so sorry, I'm.
I voted to uh accept option one. Staff's recommendation for option one.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I, I thought we were, and it's my fault, we were just having discussion direction on the boardwalk, but we do have um, yes, go ahead, Mr. Griffin.
Add it as an emergency item, yeah.
Um, motion to itself, this is an emergency, Adam?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Yes.
Yes. It's my fault, Sunny.
That's okay. We should, we should have had your bag.
Resolution number twenty twenty-three, R twenty-four, resolution of the City of Palaca, Florida, authorizing the submission of a Florida Department of Transportation Transportation Alternative Program grant the amount of one million, two hundred and fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred and thirty-nine dollars for reconstruction with the composite decking or seven hundred and eighty thousand, five hundred and eighty-eight for reconstruction with wood decking for Memorial Bridge, true connector improvements and providing for scrivener's errors.
So move. Second.
Let.
You so move.
So move.
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Mr. Thank you.
Something.
Yeah, 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 yeah. Um, next, consideration of award of R F P twenty twenty-two, twenty-six promotion production of the Blue Crab Festival.
Mr. Holmes conveniently left the room. And Mr. Cutright's not here, so I'll, I'll, uh, give you a brief overview. So your, uh, your staff evaluation committee, uh, met on Monday, uh, reviewed the still respondents, uh, proposal. Um, respondent is here handing out some additional information. Uh, we did qualify the response. It met all of the minimum criteria as outlined in the request for proposals. And I'll just give you a quick overview of what was proposed. There were two options, the first being to put on the Blue Crab Festival.
Of what?
Which, there were two options. The first to put on the Blue Crab Festival for a total cost of two hundred and two thousand and five hundred dollars. Of that included a twenty-two thousand and five hundred dollar, uh, promoter fee. The city would get the first ninety thousand dollars in revenue. That does not include the alcohol sales. And after that, there would be a twenty-five and seventy-five percent share. The promoter and seventy-five percent going to the city. Correct? Okay. The second option, uh, was to simply pay them seventy-five thousand dollars, uh, to put on the Blue Crab Festival. They would incur the expenses and they would get all the profits if there are any. Um, we did talk in detail, um, with the respondent about, um, how that contract looked. The R F P laid out a one-year term with two one-year renewal options at the city's discretion. Um, and it would be up to the city and the promoter would not compete and the city securing local sponsorships or local grants, for instance, the T V grant. T D C. Thank you. Mr. Thomas, did I leave anything out?
And was there, was there a city recommendation on that?
Mr. Holmes?
Based on all of the options?
Well, of course, I've got feelings about this. Uh, uh, ultimately, as you know, it's your decision to make. Um, but from perspective of finances, uh, the option that has us contributing seventy-five thousand dollars, it, uh, gives us a finite and a definite amount of exposure financially to the festival. Option one, the, the option that, that has us, uh, essentially participating at a different level and coming up with, I think the proposal was two oh two five. She may, I understand that Janina may be asking for a little bit less than I, one ninety-five, but that, that option is, um, a whole lot less, I guess you'd say certain and definite in terms of the financial exposure to the city. Um, so from perspective of financial responsibility, fiscal responsibility, um, and also quite frankly, uh, the, uh, logistics of trying to monitor and account. Uh, the, the, the seventy-five thousand dollar investment is, is much more attractive from staff's perspective. You're the ones that ultimately make the decision. Repeat that again. But if we were in a position of simply providing seventy-five thousand in seed money with the understanding or hope that we were, were to recover a portion of that back from T D C and maybe even other private sponsors in the area, then our exposure is conceivably significantly less than seventy-five thousand. At that point, we don't have the concern of trying to monitor revenue, uh, accountings, alcohol sales, expenses. We, we're putting our seventy-five in the pot and we're, we're, we're basically, uh, at that point, that's the extent of our partnership other than the, uh, public works, police and fire, which, and I guess permit fees were also, we were going to absorb those. But in terms of, um, you know, the possibility that we end up with a, a lot of expenses, uh, that, you know, that, uh, we didn't anticipate. We, we reduce that possibility because seventy-five is what we put in the pot and she goes from there. So, you know, I'm, I'm speaking from a fiscal standpoint, from a administration standpoint, from a standpoint of what I believe is certain in terms of our exposure. Obviously, the other side of things, uh, I would, the way we have, uh, a, I think, assessed this would be as follows. If we took the second option where we guarantee basically right now, the number's two oh two five. Uh, if we guarantee two oh two fives, okay? And then, um, our, um, our hope is that we recover enough from revenues so that our two oh two five becomes seventy-five or fifty or thirty. We're banking on a whole lot of revenue. Um, and also Ms. Sebelero's proposal took the alcohol revenue out of the picture for the city in, in her proposal, if I understand it correctly. And we tried to be careful in, in that, in that conversation. Meaning, and there was, you know, that's a significant wa- item of, a component of the revenue stream. So if, if there's no alcohol revenue coming to the city to try to recoup the, the money we're guaranteeing, then you're depending upon vendor, uh, licenses or spots, for lack of a better term, T-shirt sales. Um, and, uh, we don't have any, we don't have any tickets right now that, last year we had no ticket sales. So you'd have to, that'd be a whole different component of you then getting into the idea of what you're gonna sell tickets to and where and how, a whole nother component of administration. Um, so, you know, if you've got no revenue from alcohol and you're depending upon just vendor sales, I mean, vendor spots being sold, T-shirt spots being sold, counting on bringing in a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from that's not a bet that I'd wanna take it or my money, but it's not. It's your money.
No.
It's the citizen's money that you're, you're basically.
Good steward.
Shepherd's of. So, so I'll, I'll admit, you know, from, from a perspective of, you know, my opinion that, uh, that's a lawyer and a finance major's a assessment of what I'm looking at, um, and not a promoter's assessment. So I'll leave it, I'll leave it at that. So, Thomas, did you have anything? We, we all discussed this and I think we put our thoughts on the table. Uh, do you have, uh, anything that you have to say that different or Mr. Griffith from?
Uh, but with the option where the city just pays the seventy-five thousand, this is more in keeping with what we have historically seen with Blue Crab from a staffing perspective. What you saw last year, Mr. Holmes was down there, Ms. Thomas was down there, Mr. Cutright was down there, your entire finance department was down there. Typically, it's just public works. It's just sanitation, the electrician, police and fire personnel. There was a lot of resources that didn't really get captured in the cost. And I will add, Mr. Holmes was alluding to, we estimate or estimated the revenues to be based upon last year's number. It backed into about a hundred and forty thousand dollar cost to the city. So the.
Net.
Yes. After you get whatever you get back, about a hundred and forty net. So it's, as I've, as I've often done, it helps me to make analogies to everyday experiences that we all have. You can buy Mercedes, you can afford it, but if you can't, you might need, you know, a Ford. So you can afford a Mercedes.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Sebelero, come on up, Ms. Sebelero. Name and address for the record, please.
Janina Sebelero, one zero five Palone Avenue, St. Augustine, Florida, joining the zip code number. Three two zero four. So when I prepared, actually Sunny, I emailed you the two thousand seven Blue Crab budget from the city. If you can look that up. What I prepared in this folder, um, is our actual after-action commissioner meeting that took place on June twenty-third after the Blue Crab. Um, I had hoped to capture the last eight months to work on the Blue Crab. We voted unanimously at that time to renew the contract, but then we never had another meeting until November. So in coming in with a higher hope than the last time I spoke to you, I've lost sixty-eight days since the last time I spoke to you. It's getting like last year where the time is becoming more valuable than, than what we had. Uh, so it's, it's costly. Time is costly as a promoter. Uh, what I put in this, in this packet, um, are some things that I consider as a promoter when I take risks on. And I prepared the two options. One is a conservative option. It totally eliminates your risk. The other option is a bells and whistles option. You know, it's, I, I'm not gonna beat around the bush that it is a world-class festival, celebrity headliner option. And you have the option, um, but you would run a risk. So in doing and preparing those two options in this folder, I looked at a few things and I wanted to provide you with the most information that you can have to make an informed decision. And that's sort of what I do with my, my work. So if I'm gonna run the risk, I'm gonna look at the same things you are and I'm gonna give you those information pieces. Um, one of them is a, is a long-range weather forecast. We talked about raining. We talked about, oh, we could, we could spend a lot of money, book a lot of great people and then it rains. Who's out that money? The long-range weather forecast for Blue Crab, the sunshine every day, eighty-two to ninety-two for, for the farmer's almanac right now and, and on one weather change. So I included that. I included, um, some letters of recommendation from the staff, from the city staff, we stood out, you know, and what we brought to the table. Last year, we had to be very flexible. We were brought in seventy-two days in advance of the event. You know, we were establishing programs and patterns as we went. Uh, we have real data. We have real numbers of what it costs to do this festival. So Sunny, do you have that? Two thousand seven? So in two thousand seven from the city archives, if you'll go to the second page, um, the Blue Crab Festival cost two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. That was in two thousand seven. So twenty years ago, and not at the rate of inflation in the world, you were at two hundred and seventeen thousand dollars. So to scale it to, to a two hundred and two thousand dollar festival, a one hundred and ninety-five thousand dollar festival, one hundred and eighty-five, when you're talking about that, it's, it's not gonna make that big of a difference, but I don't want you to go into risking two hundred thousand dollars and thinking that it's an absurd amount that's never been spent on the Blue Crab. On the Blue Crab in two thousand seven, you spent twenty-nine thousand dollars on shirts. So I just want to present all of the information so that you can make an informed decision. Either way, the festival, I could do the Blue Crab Festival for ten thousand dollars. It's gonna be a different kind of a festival. That's sort of where we're at. So it's a risk verse, um, complete cut commitment as a partner. Um, I've answered a million questions. We've talked about it. Um, so I, you know, I'm willing to answer anymore, but I want you to have all the information on the table. Do, uh, do I have it?
I'm unsure who's talking, but I can tell someone's talking. I just can't hear, so.
Commissioner Jones, do you happen to have, uh, the Blue Cab line item for last year?
I have that.
You guys don't have, I mean, why, why we even have putting two thousand and seven up compared to this year? That's not making it a form of decision. Maybe that's on the city side?
That's, uh, we've looked at that in the after-action meeting and the last meeting and.
If you, you guys actually must make a decision right now and I would like to see the sheets, uh, you, what you, what you.
I can email.
What we, what we paid, what we got last year.
That in November? Is that a mission Friday, November?
We had about, um, I think the final numbers came in. Jonathan can get them right now. Don't wanna, don't wanna be.
That, that, that was for the general public information. I know, but I would like, if we're gonna talk about it.
I know.
Initially, the numbers were, we brought in three oh two, we spent two ninety-seven. But I think we ended up, and when I say we brought in, that brought in includes cities' contribution, sponsor contributions, all of those things. That wasn't that you had the festival and you, you generated three hundred, two thousand dollars worth of revenue. That's not that case. That means that the three hundred and two was included, what the city put in from your general fund, what we got from Truist Development Council, what we got from private sponsors, all that was included in that three oh two. Jonathan, they had to update the numbers. So, and part of the things, part of the problem was, so I guess the total expenses were two ninety-nine, five eighty-six, pretty close at two ninety-seven. And, um, the, uh, and that's, so that was your total expense, two ninety-nine, five eighty-six. Now, it's true, we've done a lot of, we've had a lot of conversations because first of all, we'd never staffed. We, we're not event promoters. We're not administrators of festivals. Last year was a lot of learn as you go, uh, for all of us. And he, Jonathan's right. There was a lot of us that put a lot of time in down there, a lot of people that didn't get paid overtime, spent a lot of time down there during the Blue Crab Festival trying to make sure that we protected the city's interest. But there are some things that we just didn't anticipate or know to anticipate. And in the after-action, your, your anticipation or your expectation, at least the way it was explained to me from the commission meeting, as I recall, was that you hope to generate enough surplus money for seed money for the next festival. That was mentioned several different times. Uh, we were concentrating heavily on looking at the revenue and feeling pretty good about things as the festival's going along. And I think I've told you, as of the date of the festival, we were at one forty-five or ninety-five or less in expenses. We were under your one forty-five. We were under one forty-five in expenses, but then we had a boatload of expenses come in after the festival that we
anticipated.
Hadn't been in a position to monitor.
Well, and I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm true doing that. Were marked up from our initial bids and quotes we received from vendors within Putnam County.
Vendors, but the point is that they weren't. There was, there was obvious need for us to come up with some additional mechanism for control. Um, and that's, and I re, so as we had our conversations, our conversations were about, okay, had we had a bad, and I, farmers almanacs are great things, but I wouldn't put a big bet on that forecast in May, in late May from right now. I mean, it'd be great if it happens, but the point is, we had the two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars in expenses. If we hadn't gotten some revenue, some decent revenue from the festival, then our net would have been significantly, net loss would have been, or expense would have been significantly more. So, yeah, part of that conversation afterwards, and we had a number of after-action committee meetings, uh, where we tried to decipher and understand more about, you know, how we ended up with two hundred and ninety-nine thousand dollars in expenses. We had given a budget of one forty-five, as I recall, and we had pledged to reach, pledged seventy-five. But, you know, we ended up with two ninety-nine. So the, our, our, we, we, we came out to the point where with our contributions and so forth, we almost broke even, but I say that with an asterisk in that, that, that involved us putting general fund money in the pot to quote break even. So our goal was, how did we get here? How do we avoid getting here again? How do we monitor? And in that, in that whole process, we, we did, we had a lot of meetings. Ms. Tebberera was very cooperative and met with us and we tried to be as open as we could about all sides of it. Uh, but it's just a tough thing to kind of get your arms around when this isn't your business and, and so that's where we are.
All right. And, and to that point, right, we never promoted any festivals. The biggest question is, you mentioned a little, just a little earlier, you said, uh, um, we have the eating costs of public safety, you know, of, of work. um, we have the eating costs of public safety being, uh, of works being out. How, how did that look? Where are we with that as far as?
I think we, our numbers last year, did we end up with like eight or nine thousand dollars total? Historically, it's been around fourteen thousand dollars for, uh, our permit fees. So our, so our permit fees, our actual, uh, wages of, of fire police and, and, uh, public works, we had said earlier, we thought around nine, but I guess Jonathan, we've got a better estimate, so it's about fourteen.
So that's, so that proposal, that would be the seventy-five plus the fourteen plus. And then that's it.
That's our, we make it very well known that we were not, uh, a, we were not being, we were not gonna be, uh, fund, we would not be funding, debts incurred would not be incurred in our name, we would not be expected to pay for the debts. It would be, that would be our contribution, and we would hope to get some of that ninety or so back from TDC. And if we could, then we drop that number down, so that would not be ninety plus TDC and plus, it would be.
Coming back.
So I'm not, in any way, please understand, I'm not criticizing Ms. Tabalero. I thought the festival was, it was a great festival, she did a great job. I thought the crowd enjoyed it, the people seemed to enjoy it, I heard nothing but great comments. But, you know, nobody paid except basically the city. Let's just be honest about it, wanna be blunt, talk about it. We didn't charge for, for admission to anything. Uh, we, we, the only revenue we got was from, um, from the vendors who paid and, and that scale as to how much they pay was, you know, I'm not sure if it was the right way to go in terms of, uh, of, of the numbers. I mean, they were paying a flat fee and some of them were making a lot of money. Maybe that should have been a, uh, sliding scale or some percentage, but we didn't, that, again, that's not my background, it's put on a Blue Crab Festival. So we tried to do the best we could with it, and then in retrospect, then, first time around's one thing, but the second time around, we tried real hard in the after-action meetings to figure out what we could do to, you know, so the city would have a firmer handle on where they were headed with it. And that's, that's where it comes from. But I'm not criticizing Ms. Tabalero, she did a great job. I, I think anybody that was down there, I was down there, um, you know, you, you saw what was going on, you heard the comments that are being made. I, I, I don't know that I heard one negative comment, some, somebody who walked up and said they didn't like the picture on the front of the t-shirts. That's the best you can do, you know?
So, so one last question. And so we mentioned seed money as well, so at least going into this thing, if we don't, if we just break even, I guess citizens would be happy we got our money back. But what are, what is the goal? I think that's what we should ask ourselves.
Well, I think that the, the question is, how can this be more self-sustaining event in the future, which apparently, and clearly, it's not at this point. It's a black hole.
I mean, we have to take in consideration that this is the first time that we did take this up under our wings since God knows how long. So of course, um, of course, with anything, there's a risk of a loss. But I just wanna take that in consideration as well. Um, I don't want us to start something, put it off, start something, put it off. It's either we're gonna run the festival or we're not gonna run the festival from this point forth, and I think that's the decision that we as a commission need to make. Of course, we all want to see, um, it happen, but I think, uh, Ms., uh, Kitchens, she said a better, the best, that we're not in the position to run a festival. And I'm one of the first ones to say, I want to see it happen, but if it's something that we're gonna do, we're gonna do it. If we're not, we're not, we've kicked the can down the road entirely too long, we have to make a decision.
I think we all agree with that.
I'm certainly in, in favor of, uh, making sure that this staple event continue on. And that's why the city got back involved again, but then we still need to figure out the continuity. This is part of continuity. Again, if we invest the ninety thousand dollars in this, uh, festival, and we got the potential to get funding back with no city staff having to do, uh, all of the over and above with the administrative, uh, things, among other things that they, that, that, that they've mentioned. Um, this is what people look for every year, and so, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of the, uh, potential for getting at least some of the money back, reducing the cost to put on a festival that this city has been having for, for decades, so.
Uh, Commissioner McCaskill?
I'm, I'm ready to make an.
But I did ask a question, if, and, so the question was, what is the goal? I know, I mean, we all want the festival. I said, but what is the goal? Are we trying to have seed money for the next year and, as Cam will say, years to come, to continue? So that we wouldn't have to go in, in reserves or anything else, or to, to make this happen? So are we gonna, are we gonna try to recuperate our money at all? It's not in the contract, we, we're saying, yeah, let's go ahead with it, but.
I think we're discussing, there, there are the two options that have been presented.
Recouping the money from the festival is not included in the seventy-five thousand dollar option or ninety thousand. You, you're gonna, if, if you, those options, one involves the city theoretically participating in a, in surplus revenues, the other one doesn't. But of course, in order to participate, you have to have surplus revenues, and that's, that's the key.
That's the risk.
You'd have to count on generating a whole lot of money from the festival in order before, before you get anything back.
I just, I just wanna know what the commission was, so we can answer that clearly, that's, that's it.
That's an investment you're making, you're not expecting to get any seed money, you're hoping to get some, some money from, uh, TDC and others to offset your ninety thousand dollar investment, but you're not gonna end up with a surplus. You know, that, under, I don't see any scenario that you end up with a surplus, I know that, I know that, um, option. The other option, you'd have to generate a whole lot of money from the festival to get anything back.
Yeah, to move that along. Ms. Tabalero, do you have something else?
No, that's it. I, I really did try to come with the two, this was direct risk versus fithely conservative option. Um, I really enjoyed working with the city of Palatka, everyone was helpful, you know, it's been a great time.
You have any artists yet?
I do need to open it up to. Um, I'm gonna open up to public comment, and we have a couple of folks that filled out cards, Ann Wallace. Please give your name and address for the record.
Hi, thank you, good evening, Mayor Commissioners. My name is Ann Wallace, I live at one thirty-four Botham Drive, um, Palatka. I've been a resident of Palatka County for eighteen months. I've been a resident in northeast Florida for eighteen years. And I wanted to speak in favor of Janana, she's a terrific person. Me and my family have not only been at many, many, many events over the eighteen years, but she has produced, performed, et cetera. And I really just want you guys to know that this is a dynamic person who can put on a dynamic event, and you guys saw that last year. I'm glad that it's not being produced. Like Mr. Holmes said, that's not his skill set, this is her skill set. And I really ask you to support her, not only financially, but with a lot of positivity. And, uh, you will see that in the city of Palatka. The Palatka County is gonna get rewards more and more than dollars in the revenue, because what you're showing is you're showing a showcase of your city that people in St. John's County, in Duval County, and Quinn County catch up. And you've got it right here, we all know that Palatka's about to pop. Because people can't come from St. John's County, and they can't, there's no more space for houses in St. John's County. There's no more spaces in Duval. And I really just urge you to support ancient city and what they're gonna do for you, not that you're gonna do for her, but you're gonna do for you.
Thank you.
What we do for each other. It's a partnership.
Ms. Kitchens?
Establishing partnerships.
Yes, folks, I'm as tired of this as you are tired of me, but it's my citizens, but it's my citizens' right to speak up. Alighra Kitchens, ten twenty-seven South Hill Street, Palatka, Florida. James Norwood is in the audience. He's a former city commissioner, I'm a former city commissioner, we sat on the commission in oh seven. No, we have never given money to Blue Crab, not two hundred thousand, period. I wanna set that record clear right now. We loaned them at one time fifteen thousand dollars, and the minute the festival's over, Sam Deppy woke, making this off into the meeting room, and handed us, handed us a check for fifteen thousand dollars. That being said, what I'm talking about is no escrow agents on Ms. Calibaro, I think she's a lovely lady, I have no problem with her. What I have a problem with is my taxpayer money being put out, that somebody put on a private function. It's not the function of the city, as Commissioner Campbell quoted me last year. You, I didn't elect you folks to hire you to be entertainers, although I'll admit you're very entertaining most of the time. I didn't hire you for that, I didn't, and Don, you're entertaining too, son. Here's the deal, I'm over here by going, son, here's the deal. If you must, and you have a third option, by the way, y'all are acting like this, you got one option, or two, oh, what am I gonna do, this and that? You got a third option, folks, you can just play no this year. Seriously? Once burned, twice shy, really? Okay, if you're gonna go with it, and I know you're bound, determined to do it, go with the seventy-five thousand dollars, you want to do taxpayer money away? Seventy-five thousand is better than two hundred and two thousand, as Mr. Holmes said, there's no risk, it's conservative. Go ahead and go with the seventy-five, since you're determined to have this festival put on. It should be a private festival. Let Ms. Calibaro put it on, she does a good job. It was been put on for twenty or thirty years by private people, then no problem. However, the city never waived the fees, the permit fees, the, this, the city service fees, and all the festivals, the, the Blue Crab Festival always had to pay those fees, and as the fees went up, it put Blue Crab in, in a bigger problem. It wasn't waived for the previous Blue Crab Festivals, don't, seventy-five thousand dollars, don't waive the fees for city service. Let Ms. Calibaro put on this, the, the festival, and if she makes a profit, wonderful.
Thank you. Anybody else for public comment on Blue Crab? I'm gonna close public comment. Okay. So we're tasked to give consideration of this award. How do we wanna move forward?
I, I would say the, 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 the option with the seventy-five thousand with, um, I mean, 'cause if we start waiving fees, uh, then that's gonna set a precedence, in my opinion. I think, um, seventy-five thousand dollar option, and it's a private, uh, company. Let, you know, let them, uh, deal with the fees.
Okay, 'cause we were presented with, I thought, and I might be wrong, that we were presented with the option of seventy-five plus the fees on top of that, of fourteen approximately, fourteen thousand. So, which, you know, we've changed it again a bit, um.
What we, we, if that's what's on the floor, I mean.
Well, well, anything on the floor, there's that on the floor, the full, um, request or proposal, that was response to the RFP, and there's also not doing it, as Ms. Kitchens pointed out.
And, and I think the seventy-five, what we've done, what we've done thus far is we went from one forty-five to, then they attempted to do the, uh, forty thousand additional dollars, and then we said, no, that would have put us to one eighty-five. Now we're at the, we are at the two oh two mark, but the seventy-five, I think, and she can get as much revenue as she can produce, and I think the city will be doing their part in, uh, that seed money. But we can't give the services as well, uh, and, and, and I, 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 I wouldn't want to put in service.
Okay.
Seventy-five flat. Seventy-five flat with the option of getting money back from TDC and some of the other, um, sponsors.
Okay.
Madam Mayor? Uh, may I ask a question, please?
Sure.
For, um, it's for the city attorney. Um, this was the sole respondent to this RFP, but don't we need to award the RFP to the respondent? Do they need to accept their recommendation of the valuation committee? I have that caption prepared, if that's what you wish.
Sorry, I was interested in what the caption was for the resolution. So I think we need to read that first and then find out exactly how.
Miss Grant, sorry.
What you're going to.
No problem. Resolution number twenty-two-three, R twenty-five, a resolution of the city of Palatka, Florida, awarding RFP twenty-twenty-two dash twenty-six, promotion and production of the Blue Crab Festival, Darky Music LLC, and providing for Scrivener's Airs.
So move.
At this point, you have approved awarding the contract at this point?
You, you're on the original proposed, response to the RFP, which is the full contract amount, correct?
But we're moving forth with the, we can, the reason that we move forth with the so-move and the second is to have discussion. We can cancel it if that's not what we desire, forsake of conversation and forsake of moving forward. That's what we have to have on the table. So if that's something that we are not agreeable upon, there would have to be a vote of whatever it is. And then we, there has to be a new motion if this does not pass.
Correct.
Correct, so we're at that point of discussion. This is discussion of the motion, which is the response to the RFP.
I, I would just, I don't know. I'm just, um, I would like to see this thing happen, and I don't gamble, but, uh, we can't gate something the first time around and expect it to be the end-all, be-all. Um, and like I said, I don't gamble, but I'm willing to take a risk. We have set the standard of what we desire to have here in the city of Palatka. The Blue Crab Festival brought out people who may have never attended a concert in their lives right here in the city of Palatka. And so, again, I would like to see it happen. And again, for Ms., for this agency to be the only one to respond after we put it out, it speaks volumes to their commitment to bringing quality entertainment to the city of Palatka. Um, so I just wanted to put that out, I wanted to put that on the forefront. As Commissioner Jones always say, I just want the citizens to know my position when it comes down to that. Um, but again, we have set the standard, and I would hate for those who have left the festival last year, who have already made plans to return this year, to be disappointed because of a simple hangup. What we've learned as a city, we need to take into action, and we need to go ahead and put those things at the forefront of conversation so that we don't fall victim to those things again. I want to see the Blue Crab happen in the city of Palatka.
Thank you.
I share the same sentiments as Commissioner Campbell. I think there is a huge anticipation of participation due to the hu, the great turnout last year, so.
I, I think the same thing as well, but I'm not gonna put that big price tag on there and just give away services that we don't, uh, afford to other, uh, entities. Um, so the, the, the piece where we're talking about waiving fees for a private entity, then we're talking about the precedence we're setting as a po, as policymakers. And I, I wanna see it go, go as well, but again, I, that's just my.
So I think to kind of put things in perspective, I'll just pick a couple of comments. One, no one stepped up to do the Blue Crab Festival, that's why we got into this scenario last year. It wasn't something that private promoters were willing to jump into without some assistance from the city. If you make the decision that you want a festival, then the next question is what's your level of commitment gonna be? In this case, you only had one respondent to an RFP that we put out, one respondent. That one respondent gave you two options. So I don't see that I've got the resolution, and, and I was trying to look for it in my packet. So I don't know what resolution caption Sunny's talking about reading. But the resolution, I believe, could be styled, as I understand it, um, Ms. Tabalero submitted two options in her, uh, response. So I believe, one option was, I think, the, the flat fee sort of response, for lack of, or, uh, option, for lack of a better term, and the other one was the participation response. I think you can award either response. I think it was, and, and as long as the, as long as what you award is not substantially different from what she proposed, I, I think you're good. Now, I guess I'm seeing the, are the, the. Now, I guess I'm seeing the are the the, uh, resolution now, so.
And if I may correct, I think some of the things from what I'm gathering from the last conversation that we had, the increase, one of the reasons of the increase was due to the timeframe of what would have been had to promote or to plan the, um, festival. Which I think from the time then to where we are now, it shortened.
So my question simply is, I I guess the commission, if you're going to do it, that's the first question, if you're going to, uh, is you're going to try to participate at some level by funding or either as a partner, so to speak, in the festival? That's the first question, second question is, I, and I'm not sure I understand where Commissioner Campbell is going, I don't know if he's, I'm not sure if you're arguing commissioner in favor of the seventy five thousand option or the other option, but I think the commission needs to decide if it's gonna go forward, and if so, which option it's going forward with. Now, as far as waiving the fees, you know, we've done this in other ways before. You can, instead of saying seventy five plus fee waiver, you can give her ninety and let her pay the fees. If you're worried about the technical precedence being set, so it, you know, that's kind of, from my perspective, semantics. Um, or you can just say seventy five and she pays the fees, which means that your net contribution is, or somewhere around that, at that point, uh, fourteen sixty one would be your net, your net contribution, so to speak, so, but that's where I think we are, um, you know.
Okay.
And I think that she should, I believe she does need a decision tonight, because the time.
Of the essence, yeah.
Yeah.
We all agree with that. So what is the pleasure of the commission?
Uh, what is the motion before the commission, I mean?
When I read the caption, the caption was just award the RFP twenty twenty two twenty six to, for the promotion, production of the Blue Crab Festival to Arq Music. It was a mo- uh, motion to approve that caption by Commissioner Campbell, a second by Commissioner Borm.
Can you, can you go ahead and scrap, scroll up on that, that you got on there, because I can't read the body of it. Hold, hold still then.
It just awards.
Awarding it to Arq Music.
It doesn't.
Mayor's authorized, it's your contract, read upon terms.
Mr. Holmes, we expected them to either spell out the terms in the motion or make a secondary motion, uh, for the contract terms after the award of the RFP.
Okay, that's. You're awarding to the bidder, and then you're telling us what's.
Budget, what the budget amount is, okay. So, okay, so we we have the motion in second, all in favor of awarding the RFP. Any opposition, okay, and now we need a motion to determine the budget.
Borm just said, good.
I'll make, I'll make a motion that we do the seventy five flat. That's my motion.
A second.
Okay, we have motion in second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition?
Hold up, Jonathan.
Oh, yes, I'm sorry.
I thought she. What do we, are we in charge? At what point are we in charge? I mean, we, we just said what we passed.
But my thing is, how can we award something to someone and it's not a contingent on them agreeing to what the award of them?
Right, no, that's reasonable, excuse me.
I I don't, I I I just don't think that's fair, I, how?
You're right, Commissioner Campbell, come on, come on up, please, Mrs.
Um, the reason the infrastructure fees were factored into option B was because we were alleviating the Finance Department, the Internal Affairs, it was, um, police and EMT and, um, the boots on the ground, if you will. That was factored in, um, you know, because the city retains the ownership of this festival. I'm not a private, i- if you award this to me, it doesn't become a private festival. So the infrastructure of the city helping out with the permit fees was discussed because the city will renew my contract. So that's longevity of me working within the city, working with institutions and agencies within the city. That's why that was added to option B.
Question is, if you don't mind me clarifying, motion on the floor is the seventy five is to, is to award the bid, but cap the contract at a seventy five thousand dollars, which would not include the waiving the fees, and I guess what they're looking for is basically an answer from you, is that acceptable to you?
I I honestly, I I say split the difference, and I'll ask you then for, uh, eighty five.
Let me ask this point, for a point of clarity, for the caption that was read, or whatever was read, what was the number that was a part of that?
There wasn't a number.
It was just the award of the, um, RFP to Arq Music, Commissioner.
Which confuses me, because when I think back to our previous meeting where this was a discussion, there was a number that was provided to us. And so, we, we directed staff to have a conversation or meet with regards to some logistics, but I believe that there was a number that was presented. So I'm confused as to now we are awarding something, how can we award something and there not be a number attached?
Because the resolution awards the bid to the one respondent, but then specifies that a contract will be executed with either the mayor or the city manager being authorized to sign it in accord with the terms that the commission sets right now, terms meaning number.
But there was a number that was presented to us prior.
And I think that was prior to the time you had a response to your RFP.
Only sole respondent at that time.
But the, that RFP hadn't been issued yet.
RFP hadn't been issued at that time. RFP's being issued, was issued, and now here you are with a response, and the response is in front of you for consideration.
And what Ms. Sebalero produced in that RFP in her response was two options.
Which we're discussing this evening.
The seventy five.
Yep.
I do have a question. In the packet, I see where Commissioner Campbell actually had a reference for the vendor, that sort of conflict? Would that cause a conflict or some type of relationship issue? Does he act?
He served as a reference.
He, he put a little reference in for this individual. So I think we need to.
I read the, the packet and looked at the documents, this letter seems to be in reference to, uh, um, not referring to this co- uh, this.
It's a reference.
Other, yes.
They came up.
We have, we have several in there from city employees.
Okay, so, yeah, so I'm asking the force, will that, is there some type of conflict arises from these being from?
My reference came. Let me, let me explain, no, 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 because I'm not gonna allow you to put me in a position. My reference came to her as a person who has hosted something in the city of Palaca. That's where my reference come from, it was not a personal reference, I do not know her. I have not known her prior to her coming to the city of Palaca to host the Blue Crab Festival. So it was a professional reference, just as if she was going out for another job, that it can happen. So as far as with regards to this, no, sir, that is not a reference for anything, or that is not anything saying that just because she did before, she's the sole person who has responded to this RFP. And again, I want to see it happen in this city. So that's my response, and nobody else can, and nobody else can answer that for me.
Okay, can we, I'm the, so, just to see, making sure that everything is good, I mean, for my.
As you can see from the letters that are included in the package, they are written on city of Palaca stationery. Um, as Commissioner Campbell says, they are professional, um, recommendations that she performed the service here for the city of Palaca. And that she can use them in.
May I say, may I submit something?
One minute, please.
And that Ms. Sebalero could submit these as references for future, um, positions outside of Palaca for services that she would provide for additional concerts.
Actually, um, since Blue Crab produced a three-part, uh, concert series in Palatka, um, and I actually spent more than I made as a promoter of Blue Crab in twenty twenty two on that series. I went through all of the regular, um, permitting process to do that. And in that process, I used the references of experiences that people within Palatka had had with me.
I just wanted a legal question, yeah.
Sure.
It don't have any barriers on personally, it's just, I don't want like conflict.
Yeah, we need to kind of wrap this up, I think, folks, there are a lot of people waiting here.
So there's all.
We have a motion in second for the seventy five thousand, as far as the budget is concerned on the table.
She made a comment that she was willing to split the difference and accept eighty five thousand, am I right?
And paid fifty percent of the permitting fees back to the city of Palatka.
The permitting fee, you said it was fourteen five, and so that would put you at eighty two, two fifty, but I don't, you know, we, I think we're going back, like, on just small, small stuff. But it's, I was just concerned with just giving services. And, um, just, we offer to say that's our seed money. And not, and not to just give those services, the way you're gonna have unlimited potential for, fun, you know, to 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 make how much ever money you can make. And so I, I, I just think that, you know, we have, um, people who do festivals and everything else, and they have to pay fees. And I just, in my opinion, I can, I mean, for me, just these are the things. But the seventy five thousand, while we want to make sure that everything go forward, but with with fourteen thousand.
If it's at seventy five thousand dollars, then I would submit for, to be the private owner and establish a legal entity for the festival.
Okay.
That's a whole different.
Well, that's why the, the infrastructure fees were included, because it is retained by the city of Palatka.
So I guess the question was to you, could you do it, could you accept our seventy five thousand dollars? And you, I, but, well, I know that she said no, she gave us another option.
Well, she, she said the seventy, what, we can vote, we can vote on what, I guess, put out there, if somebody else is gonna put something on top there.
There is a motion on the table right now.
I'll accept the seventy five thousand dollars.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, any opposition? Okay, we can now move along to the next item. Public hearings, presentation impact fees for Fatales Consultants.
Good evening, Mayor, commissioners.
Hi.
Um, Joe Williams from Reftellis, I'm a senior manager. And we have our top consultant Larry Keifer, he is the president of Transportation Impact Beads. So first, we're gonna go through, um, the municipal parts and the police fire parts. And we're gonna talk about your water sewer, and then lastly, we're gonna talk about transportation.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Mayor, um, how long do you expect your presentation to last?
Uh, we're gonna try to be brief, we're on, hopefully fifteen to twenty minutes, we're gonna.
Do you want?
Pretty quick through your slides.
Bring the other issues up, we're all the folks here.
Question is for your consideration, do you think it's possible that you might want to look at the other?
Okay, yes, we have a lot of folks here for a particular issue, and if we can, I'm sorry, but bring you back in a little bit. Thank you. Ordinance twenty twenty three zero one to amend conditions of approval of zoning ordinance sixteen forty seven to include restaurants and allowable use at six two three, six two five Laurel Street, second reading adoption, I have to recuse myself. Um, and you do get it, Commissioner Bill.
Will it have to be?
Well, wait a, wait a, well, okay, Commissioner.
Gotta get a quorum.
You gotta have a. Can I offer a legal opinion, even though I'm not a lawyer? So, even though I'm not officially a city lawyer, um, for quorum purposes, once the meeting started, you have the quorum. A recusal does not, does not destroy the quorum, so you can recu- recuse yourself, and you still have a quorum, and Commissioner Campbell is on Zoom. So I think you're okay to go forward. So Lisa, you want to come forward, please?
We're gonna speak on this resolution.
May I read the caption, Ms. Commissioner Jones? Ordinance number twenty twenty three zero one, an ordinance of the city of Palac, order providing that ordinance sixteen forty seven be amended to add a restaurant use to the PUD C one A, land unit development, commercial neighborhood, list of conditions of approval, and exhibit be for the property known as six twenty three and six twenty five Laurel Street, Dix map, plaque, and map book two, page forty six, block forty, part of block one, book seventy three, page one forty five, excluding book one sixty six, page three fifteen, parcel number forty two, ten, twenty seven, sixty eight, fifty, zero, four, zero, 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 one, zero, providing for sever building, providing for an effective date, and noted for the record, Commissioner Borm spec.
Go move.
Thank you.
As noted, as noted, the second reading of this ordinance, and it was, it is a revision of an ordinance from nineteen, um, sorry, from two thousand sixteen, not nineteen. Uh, yeah, it's a little late tonight, um. That ordinance from twenty sixteen had a list of conditions of approval on there, and, um, a restaurant was not included in that. The applicant is, has a proposed use in the space as a restaurant, and they're interested in revising those conditions. In the C one A, P U D, in the C one A zoning district, a restaurant is a permitted use.
Have a motion in a second.
A motion, motion to approve. No, this, we should.
Think you already did, you're ready for a vote.
It's gonna go, go to a vote, yes. Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, you will need to file a written.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. An ordinance of the city of Palac, Florida, providing that the official zoning map of the city of Palac, Florida, be amended from city of Palac Residential Single Family R one A A to city of Palac Residential Single Family R one A for the following property, nineteen hundred Mosley Avenue, Palac, Florida, three two one seven seven, off the height, map book three, page one twenty four, all of block, block one, closed alley, south portion of C one A street, that portion of Cleveland Avenue, block six, lots nine, ten, eleven, twelve, that north part of closed C and one A street, closed Cleveland Avenue, closed alley, bu- block seven, lot seven and eight, portion of closed abandoned roads, Palmasia Street, Cleveland Avenue Alley, or official records, book two fifty eight, page four seventy one, official records, one eighty one, page one forty five, official records, eleven twenty four, page eighteen thirty seven, parcel B, part of lot number thirteen, ten, twenty six, thirty one, seventy, zero, zero, one, zero, 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 providing for sever building, providing for Scrivener's Airs, and providing for an effective eight.
Go move.
As noted, this is an application for, um, nineteen hundred Mosley Avenue to revise the zoning from R one A A to R one A to permit the construction of single family residential homes. The, um, application has been in process for quite a number of months now, with a lot of discussion, back and forth. Uh, it went before Planning Board in December, and the Planning Board recommended, recommended denial. Um, the applicant is here to make a presentation this evening on their behalf. I'm Toby McWiggen, um, Anna Mollbelder, one fifty three Branson Road, Green Coast, France, Florida, three two zero four three. Um, history on this, is we started this back in twenty twenty one, um, and had a plat ready to go, and it was actually went through planning and went through zoning and was approved. And then there was some confusion with the ordinance and how long it takes, you know, from. And then there was some confusion with the ordinance and how long it takes, you know, from preliminary plat to approved plat, and that time limit went and, you know, we missed our deadline, it was six months that we had to do it. And then we asked for an extension, it became known that the zoning that was originally thought of as R one A was actually R one A A. Which then my plat no longer fit in that designation, so instead of scrapping the whole project and starting over, I was just asking for a rezone to the R one A of this, within the community and everything surrounding it.
Okay. Got it.
From actually asking. Dana Lewis, one thirty Plant Road, East Palatka, Florida, three-two-one-three-one. So, um, basically, right now, and just to correct me, uh, we were, we resolved for six homes?
We resolved for, actually, eleven homes, some sixty-foot wide lots, with an R one A designation.
Thank you. And um, we're basically just wanting to add one more home, correct? Um, I'm gonna pass you around.
So you said six, she said eleven, one more, is it gonna be seven or twelve?
Correct, there's originally, it was an eleven lot subdivision, and that was what was approved, and before we had a chance to get through the de- design phase, where we had St. John's Water Management, you know, DOT and everybody lined up, during that period, our six months to record the plat expired. So we asked for an extension because obviously we need more time to get, you know, roads and all that kind of stuff approved and figure out what we need to do to actually construct the subdivision. And during that time is when we found out that it wasn't actually zoned R one A as I was originally told back in two thousand twenty-one, and it's actually R one A A. So I'm just asking now to, instead of scrapping the entire thing, to go to R one A. And the different, my lots belong Mosley and Edgemore are seventy foot lots, R one A, they asked for eighty foot lots, so I'm not asking for much. But if I were to go for, you know, eighty foot lot there, I will potentially lose two to three lots. And trying to do an affordable housing project, it makes it difficult, and I don't know that I wanna continue with that project, if that makes sense.
What's the square footage of these houses?
My smallest house, I think the minimum square footage in the city of Palatka is twelve hundred.
Have you guys seen any examples that was built on Ivy Street, there were two new construction homes? So basically, that was built by them, and then basically, it would be about the same size lot. So basically, we would be um trying to build the same size lot as what is on Ivy Street, which is a very nice sized lot, especially in the, in the city. Uh, the homes will still be um the same quality built, um, same features, we're just trying to um change the size of the lot.
Thank you.
Alvin Jones, twenty-two hundred Palmasia Terrace, Palatka. I'd like to say good evening to the mayor and the commissioner, certain citizens. I'd like to give a little history of, as I see it. A and M Builders purchased this property in August of twenty twenty-one. In November of twenty twenty, and when they did, it was zoned R one double A. Residential low density. In November of twenty twenty-one, they brought to the planning board a request to subdivide. Don't, their plans to subdivide met R one A standards, not R one double A. The board could not approve with the trunks that they had. They were told, they were, R one A was mentioned over and over again, no one ever mentioned R one double A. The board could not approve it with the trunks they had. So, so they sent them back, like, that's the six months she brings up, they did not approve it. The, the director of the board, campus members, and they recommended approval, but they did not vote on it. That's, that's one of the big differences. Then, nine months later, nine months, not six months, they asked for an extension. The board was then informed that it was R one double A, and they denied the request and the extension. Last, this past month, they came to the planning board again with a zoning change request, then zoning change request was denied by the planning board. Basically, all of the property to the north of, of this property is R one dou- R one double A. The properties to the west are R one double A, the properties to the south are R one double A. The properties to the east and southeast corner are R one A, but they all meet the requirements of R one double A. Y'all let this rule to remain or, or one double A, not meet the minimum standards of R one A. Thank you.
Thank you, um, my name is Karen Hughes, I live at one-nine-zero-seven Mosley Avenue. My lot is one A, but it's a hundred feet, it goes beyond even the two A requirement, and all the houses on that, in Mosley, that would be to the east of this, are all one hundred feet lots. It just doesn't fit in with the neighborhood, now, I'm not opposed to them building homes, I know Palatka needs homes, I'm all for it. But just buildings become decent sized lots, um, there's no, we have zoning for a purpose, and that's protect those people who are homeowners. And you build these homes on sixty foot lots, and they say they wanna do seventy, but if you zone it sixty, there's, you know, if they wanna make it sixty, they can make it sixty. So, um, if, if they do that, that's gonna lower our property values, and I don't think that's fair. We have invested money in our properties and to let some, you to come in and, and let a group change the zoning, then it lowers our values, and that's, that's just not.
I'm Teddy Nichols, uh, seventeen seventeen Palmasia Street, Palatka. We are not directly connected to this, but the Palmasia Street, we are down on the golf course. The whole neighborhood is zoned one double A, we take care of our property. And I like Karen, I'm not against housing at all. But when you put that many houses, how big is that piece of property are? Three acres, three acres, and you put seven houses on three acres on a busy street like Mosley and Edgemore, the tracking is tremendous. And we just don't want that many houses put in that small of an area. So we're just, I am against some changing the zoning from one A, one double A to one A.
Martha Nichols, seventeen seventeen Palmasia Street, Palatka, Florida. As my wife Teddy said, we live on Palmasia Street, we're living, we're about a quarter of Laurel East of Mosley, and where there's property near this property. I wanna reiterate a couple of things that were said earlier. Number one, I disagree with the, uh, comment made earlier, this does not fit within the community, the R one A does not fit within that part of our community. It's R one double A fits within that community. The planning board unanimously voted to deny their request. The, the property, remember, this property is owned R one double A. To the north, R one double A, to the west, R one double A, to the south is R one double A, to the east, where Miss Hughes lives, is R one A, but like she said, all the ones in properties are four houses along there, from, from Edgemore, Palmasia, there's only four houses, they're each on four, on one hundred foot, the slots. What they're proposing to do is put four houses across from, basically, two and a half of those houses. And I, I disagree with that, I think it all remains one, um, R one double A is like it is right now, and has been since the city's owned it many, many years ago. Thank you.
Yeah.
Happy New Year, board, a reminder to addition. My name is Audrey Wise, I reside at sixteen-ten Edgemore Street in Palatka. I stand before this board just because I stood before the planning board before, and I stated that this board, as well as the planning board and the zoning board, are the gatekeepers of this town. We, as citizens, voted to end to be our gatekeepers, to keep us somewhere in the future, but keep us in the mainstream of where we are. We chose to come to Palatka and live here because of its uniqueness. And I implore anyone who wants to build a home, absolutely, this is the place to come. You get a, you, you get a good feel of community and family here. And I do know there's a boom that's going to happen here in Palatka. But there's also a standard here in Palatka, is what keeps us here. As the gatekeepers, we would like you to see us and hear us and keep us intact, because changing a zoning just to put additional homes is not the answer. The answer is to the community in which you're coming in, speak to the people and see what worked. Because this back proof is not necessary if we have conversations. So I'm saying to change because of additional amount of homes is not good enough as you guys being the gatekeepers for us. We want you to protect what we have, invest in what we have, so we can maintain it and draw others into our community. So changing is not the answer, fitting in is, build on what you have, and, and, and make it more pleasurable and, and, and of complimenting these communities in which you're coming in. I think leave the zoning the way it is, build to accommodate, because you will attract people who want that zoning the way it is. And those that have the different zonings build within it, but first of all, talk to the community, talk to the neighbors, and ask a question, don't tell me what's good for me, I'll tell you what's good for me. And I'm looking at this board, planning, zoning, and this commission, to continue to be the gatekeepers in which we have been trusted to in. So I say, as a group, as a board, leave it the way it is and build it on what we have, and they will come because they're looking for what we have here in Palatka. Thank you.
James Norwood, twenty-three seventeen Palmasia Terrace, Palatka, Florida. I'm not going to stand here very long, cause uh, I think you guys have heard everything that this uh, community desires. And one of the things that we did, we did go before the planning board, and the planning board did requ- uh, did turn down uh, what was proposed and recommended that it would stay R A A. And one of, that's not changing dynamics of the community as it exists, is a very good neighborhood, and one of the things that I wouldn't do in reference to, I'm not opposed to building, I won't, I want homes to be, but I want the right type homes, as well as I want homes that meet the current zoning as this R one A A. Uh, thank you.
Howard Blaschek, uh, seventeen oh five Palmasia Street, I'm here with my wife, and we've lived in that neighborhood for about twenty-five years now. And I'm gonna say the same thing everybody else has said, we want it to stay R one A A into, I think, the smallest lots anywhere near there, hundred feet wide. And we're talking about neighborhoods, not just at that intersection, but we're talking about neighborhoods all around that area. So, uh, you know, I'm just gonna rea- reiterate, reiterate what everyone else said, we don't wanna change the look of our neighborhood, we want it to stay R one double A.
Did you miss any items to the law, Legal Rogers?
Don, I lost count, I think I did miss a few, but I can go back and catch you at the next meeting, so. Allegedly, Kitchens ten twenty-seven South 12th Street, Palatka, Florida. I'm standing before you as I stood before the planning board and supported these neighbors, because what hap- what the planning board allows, or what you allow, can happen in my neighborhood. My neighborhood happens to be on one A, but he developed a very welcome in, and they are close to my neighborhood now, and they could request R three, R two, or any other zoning, so that they could build more houses and get more money. I'm not adverse to making money, I like to make money, however, do not do it at the cost of the citizens. The planning board has already turned this down, now you have the right to approve it, but historically, the city commission has never, pardon me, the city commission has on occasion gone against the planning board on a, on, on eight, on cases. However, it's not, never a good idea, these people have, in Palmasia, this subdivision faces, is on the corner of Edgemore and Mosley. The in and out of it, the main thoroughfare, the only thoroughfare in this subdivision goes through Palmasia, that's another neighborhood, with other houses, that's what you, that was what was shown at the planning board meeting, that was one of the things that these neighbors objected to. In addition to, it will lower their property values, go with R one A A, leave it at that zoning, the developer can build seven houses instead of nine, assuming a two-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar cost, that they'll still each house that, that's only losing fifty thousand dollars if they lose two houses. They'll make it up in the sales price, but, and they'll still get to build the houses, make their profit, and then move to the next place. So I would say leave the zoning, respect the neighbors, and this, I think Miss Hughes said, zoning is put in to protect people's property values and their property. If you do this, basically, this is, this is a type of spot zoning, if you do that and you change, you change inspections inside neighborhoods to accommodate developers who wanna make money, yes, they go, they're good hearted, I'm not denying that, but they wanna make money, there's nothing wrong with that. But if you do that, then you need to just remove zoning all over the city and let people build what they want, where they want, anywhere, please uphold the planning board, thank you.
Madam Mayor, um, I would like to remind the board that if you choose to um overturn the recommendation of the planning board, it requires a super majority, instead of a regular, a regular majority, so four votes. Yes, sir.
The recommendation, oh, in the, in the write-up.
The staff write-up, the staff recommendation was approval.
What, the, the board didn't say?
Correct.
Not?
Correct.
Okay.
Sort of fooled the denial.
So.
That would be.
So it would, we would require, I'm not trying to make a, advocate anything, but it would require four votes to overturn the planning commission. They recommended denial, it would require fo- four votes from you to approve.
Right.
Yes, yes, yes.
I can hear something, but I can't hear who's talking. I heard what Mr. Holmes said, but after that, I just heard, yes, yes.
And, and.
And it's up or down.
Madam Mayor.
On the floor, and it's up or down.
And, and this is, and this is to, to change it from R one A A to R one A, that's what's on the table.
Sunny, can you repeat the motion? Can you please tell me what the record says as to the motion?
It was a motion to approve by Commissioner McCaskill.
Approve what?
No.
No, no.
When I read the caption, there was a motion to approve.
No, no, no. Was, it was, it was to, to bring it to the floor for discussion. That's what, first she had, she made, she so moved it in our second.
Mm-hmm.
But that was just for a purpose of discussion, but not for the vote. We haven't voted because we had to hear.
Oh, okay. Wait a minute. Um, Ms. Krantz, you said that you have as your official record as to, you read the caption and that was the motion and that was approved? Is that what you're saying?
No, it hasn't been approved.
Was to approve.
Approved.
Motion is to approve.
Right.
So I think, again, I think just for point of clarity, Commissioner McCa- uh, McCaskill only s- uh, made the motion and it was only second for point of discussion. So once we get to a vote, it can go either way.
Correct. That's what, that's what my intent was. Nothing, sir. Here's, here's what the deal was. But in order for us to be a, be able to hear this, it had to be mo- uh, so moved and seconded for discussion. So now we're only discussion piece. We've heard it all. Now it's time for us to vote, but there's nobody who know of that, I know of that voted yes or no on this. Yes.
Oh, I'm asking for clarification on what you're gonna take a vote. Um, approve what? Approve the, we have approved the recommendation of the planning board? Okay, so, okay, no.
No, it's the, it's C. Twelve C is saying that we're gonna go from R one A A to R one A. So that's to overturn the planning board's recommendation. That's what this is about.
What you've got, what, what you've got in front of you is an ordinance. Let, let me clarify, please.
Thank you, sir.
What you've got?
Hey.
There's an ordinance in front of you. The ordinance would, in fact, change the zoning. And that would be contrary to the recommendation of the planning board.
Absolutely.
So if you vote to approve this ordinance, you're basically voting to reject the recommendation of the planning board. If you vote to deny this ordinance, then you're basically voting in accord with the planning board, okay? So if it's your deci- if it's your intent to overturn the decision of the planning board, you vote to approve this, this ordinance. And you're gonna have to have four votes. If it's your intent to go along with the planning board, you vote to deny the ordinance.
I'm ready. All right.
So.
Ready? Want to roll call it or?
You need a motion. What's the motion?
You wanna roll call it or?
So is there, there's a motion already on the table?
Yeah.
Sunny, what's the motion that you have on the record?
There was a motion to approve the caption, but.
Oh, you have folks as a motion to approve the caption. You don't have a motion. That's the way you.
Mr. Holmes, what I'm trying to say is if there's a motion already on the table, once we vote, we can vote. No, we can vote no, so there, that's.
Either way.
Right. You can vote either way, so it can either pass or deny. So you understand that there's a motion on the table. That motion has to be voted on.
Yes.
So roll call it.
This is where we're, roll call.
Thank you. Commissioner Tammy McCaskill.
Name.
Thank you. Commissioner Justin Campbell.
Name.
Commissioner Will Jones. Thank you. Commissioner Rufus Boren.
Name.
Mayor, Mayor Robbie Correa. Thank you. We have, we have a vote of a zero to five for now.
Yes, I mean, yes, ma'am, yes, ma'am. We just had to get all that clarified. You're welcome. Thank you guys.
How are you?
Yeah.
Yeah, can we keep this thing rolling?
Did we go bump?
Do what now? What do you say, Sunny? Signing the ordinance. So the, technically, normally the mayor signs the ordinances. You recuse yourself from the consideration of the one ordinance that was passed, so.
Would it not be technically, because I know the first hearing, it was me, the second hearing was Commissioner Jones, so who would sign in the absence that?
Yeah.
It's a ministerial function that you're performing. You did not vote on it. It doesn't make any difference whether you voted on it or not. You have the authority and obligation to execute these documents. So you should sign.
Thank you.
An ordinance of the city of Palatka, Florida, providing that the future land use map, the adopted comprehensive plan, be amended with respect to the following parcel of landless and fifty acres in size from City of Palatka Commercial Con to City of Palatka Residential Low R O for the following property, a portion of seven three four one Krill Avenue, Black, Florida, three two one seven seven. Describe these lot for a parcel of land lying in and being a part of the southeast quarter, the southwest quarter of section nine township ten south range twenty six east, Putnam County, Florida. Said parcel being more particularly described, that follows. Commence at a concrete monument at the southwest corner of said southeast quarter of the southwest quarter and run north eighty-nine degrees, twenty-one latitude, oh five in east along the southerly boundary thereof, two hundred and sixty-three feet, fifty feet to the southeast quarter of a parcel of land described in deed book two twelve, page one thirty-six of the public records of said county. Then continue north eighty-nine, twenty-one oh five east along the southerly boundary, two oh seven point sixty-five feet to the point of beginning of the description from point of beginning thus described, continue north eighty-nine, twenty-one oh five east along said southerly boundary, sixty-nine point twenty-one feet to the southeast corner of the parcel of land described in deed book two thirty-two, page twenty-three of said public records. Then north zero one fourteen twenty-three west along the easterly boundary thereof, a hundred feet, then south eighty-nine twenty-nine fifty-three west, sixty-nine fifty feet. Then south zero one twenty-four fifteen east, two hundred and one point eighteen feet to the point of beginning and to close, containing point sixteen acres and providing prescription reserves, providing for effective date.
So move. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Not sure I even have a voice left for us this evening. This is for a point one six acre portion of a parcel located on the south side of Krill Avenue between Gale and Gale Lane and Round Lake Road. It abuts Kelly Smith School Road. It's across the street from Kelly Smith School. The property is currently vacant. The owner plans to construct a single family residence on the site and the applicant wishes to enable connection to the city water and sewer facilities which are available nearby. Um, lastly, the planning board met and recommended approval of this application.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any applications?
Did, did Commissioner, I'm, I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Yes, Commissioner Campbell said, aye.
Thank you.
Um, there's a second ordinance.
Second ordinance there. Rezoning.
Thank you. Hold on.
Sunny, is the legal description the same?
Um, it, it does appear that there's an old copy of the ordinance attached in the agenda packet. Um, the legal description was shortened and the copy that was no- that was noticed. So I can read the, the little shorter version if you'll allow me. An ordinance of the city of Palatka, Florida, providing the official zoning map of the city of Palatka, Florida, be amended from City of Palatka General Commercial C one to City of Palatka Single Family R one for the following property, a portion of seven three four one Krill Avenue, Black, Florida, three two one seven seven, described as a portion of lot four, a block, a parcel of land lying in and being a part of the southeast quarter of the southwest quarter of section nine township ten, south range twenty six east, Putnam County, Florida, providing for severability, providing for scribbling reserves and provided for an effective date.
So move.
I'm sorry.
Commissioner, Commissioner Campbell?
She didn't hear the caption.
I'm here.
Did, did you vote, sir?
Yes. Yeah.
We had enough.
We've nothing left, right?
Yeah, so we got adjourned.
Please tell.
She tapped out.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. I'm Joe Williams from Refill Us. And with now, uh, Mr. Larry Kiefer, who support us on the, um, transportation impact the portion of the study. And so what we're gonna do is kind of just a few slides to open it up, give you a little bit of background on impact fees and give you a, a little bit of insight is where we think you probably want to look at going and some decision points that you have with this ordinance that's in front of you. And then we'll get into the calculated fees a little bit. There's only documented report, um, that you can read the details further. We're not trying to overload you with details, um, on this study. Um, so next slide. So we're updating police, fire, parks and recreation, water sewer and transportation. And transportation is in kind of the latter part of the, the presentation here. So the last fees you implemented were two thousand and seven, so, um, we're looking at an updated application methods based on what industry trends are currently. Um, we've looked at the historical assets that you have invested in to provide police, fire, parks, water sewer, transportation services. And we're looking at your capital improvement plans moving forward to meet demands of growth. Um, and then there's statutory and case law, uh, guidelines, parameters that you should, you must follow. Next slide. Um, so these are one-time charges during the building permit process to new development or redevelopment that is going to be demanding additional in infrastructure, additional services from you. Um, so impact fees are collected and they're used solely for infrastructure investments. You're not paying salaries. You're not doing, and, and it's for expansion. So you're also not doing original placement, you know, you're not replacing a roof on a fire station. You're building an expansion for a fire station, buying new fire vehicles to serve redevelopment. Next slide. And some statutory requirements I'm gonna touch on a little bit. Larry's gonna touch on some of it later as well. Um, section one sixty-three, three one eight oh one of the Florida statutes is called the Florida Impact Act. And it's got a laundry list of different requirements for impact fees. And it's been updated three times in the past four years by the Florida legislators. And there's been a lot of activity with the statute, a lot of focus on it and a lot of new, uh, more stringent wording added to it. So the one I really want to point out, um, item A on the screen here, ensure the calculation is based on most recent look last data. Um, there, there's a lot of other provisions, um, but that's, that's one that's important since your fees were last adopted in two thousand and seven. Um, so next slide. Back forward as we, we kind of see it. Uh, right now for new development, you have a suspension of the police, fire, parks and transportation impact fees in place. That lasts until April thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. Um, I don't have the full history documented, but it's been a long time since probably near when they were initially adopted that, um, you haven't charged them. You do charge the water and sewer. And again, fees were last implemented in two thousand and seven. And so basically what we're coming to you with right now is ordinance twenty twenty-three dash oh five is the next item. The study is being included as, um, appendices to that ordinance, attachments, references. And we think that, you know, to meet that requirement of the statute, current and local cause being embedded in your impact fees that you're charging, that you should adopt that ordinance as it is with the fees that are calculated. And then you have decision points on whether you actually want to assess the fees, continue suspending them. Phase in the fees, acting like you're starting at a zero dollar fee for a lot of those, so kind of give development some time to adjust to paying these additional impact fees. You have options. Um, from what we've seen, talking this out, there's not that huge boom right now. So you, you do have a little bit of time to phase in and potentially not miss out on a lot of revenue. You haven't been collecting any revenue in the past, so implementing the fees will help you. Uh, and what, you know, one of the main principles on impact fees is that new development is coming, they're demanding services. They're requiring you to make additional investments and eventually adding fire stations, expanding your police department, have more building space, um, you know, hiring additional officers, buying vehicles, more firefighters, more, more vehicles there as well. The, these are extremely expensive, big capital investments in roads, expanding roads, eventually expanding water plants, water plants. If you're not collecting those impact fees from the development, the burden largely falls on existing development, your existing residents, taxpayers. Um, so that's why impact fees are widely used in Florida. Um, the fastest growing communities often have some of the highest impact fees. And developers generally don't flinch to pay them. Anecdote, anecdotally. Um, so next slide. Get into the fees a little bit. Um, right now on your police and fire, again, you don't, you can charge them, but there are eight non-residential land uses embedded on the police and three on fire. We're looking at one common list for the police and fire. The parks and recreation are not charged to commercial development. It's only residential. Um, and here's the, the list that we have. It's in, so the industrial, the institutional, office buildings and retail are per thousand square feet. Uh, hotel is per room, assisted living facility is per bed. Um, so these are kind of some common land uses that we see, nice general categories that most developments will fit into relatively squarely with, um, with not much contention on trying to argue between some. Um, so what the, what the fees are designed to recover and what they're based on, you know, right now, if you looked at your capital improvement plans, again, there, there wasn't a, a huge additional investment in the next five, ten years based on current development. Um, I can change over time with larger. Um, I can change over time as larger developments come in. But right now, a lot of it is based on the, the investments that you've made to date in those departments. Um, so existing police buildings, um, existing vehicles, and then we do look at, you know, adding some vehicles to support new officers as growth does happen. You have some growth on the horizon. Um, fire, again, existing, your existing fire station, and there were some replacement of vehicles identified in the capital improvement program. So what we do is we, we account for the higher cost of those vehicles that it takes to place in this service. And then we kind of remove the existing one from our fee calculation. So we're not adding like both, it's a replacement or reflecting the higher cost of needing to provide that service. And parks, there's a couple, a couple bigger projects relatively, um, compared to the rest of the list. You have the, the Jenkins Gym renovation upgrade. Um, talking to staff, um, that's more so of a, a new project for you. It's a new facility that you're investing in it to provide additional services to the community as opposed to it being some old city asset that you're just renovating. It's a new kind of offering that you're gonna have in place. And then adding some bathroom facilities at Hinkberry Park. And then the next couple of slides, these just touch on the fee calculations. Um, I, I don't think we need to dwell on them too much. They're there. We can ask any questions. So this is police. The next one is fire. And then parks is after that. If you want to scroll through the next couple of slides. And here we're, there's a note that we're kind of, we're consolidating all those different land uses on parks. We're in a three residential into one common fee per unit. Um, so your calculated fees, police, fire and parks, you'd be about two thousand one hundred and forty-three dollars if you implemented those full fees. Um, based on the list we have, kind of right in the middle of this grouping for those three key categories. Um, and next we'll touch on the water sewer briefly. I'm sorry? Um, we did not have them in here. I'm pretty sure St. John's County charges.
About seven, eight thousand. They about seven, eight thousand. I think they're about eight. I, I pulled it up. I think it was about eight grand or more. Yeah.
Yeah, we, we often see park fees and rapidly growing communities in the two to three thousand dollar range. Building park, acquire land and constructing is very expensive. Um, so utilities, again, this water, wastewater, and part of the ordinance that's in front of you is changing some of the terminology in your code to be a utility connection fee as opposed to a utility impact fee. Um, that's based in certain language in the statute that utility capital related fees are exempt from the specific requirements of that impacting statute. But utility case law overlaps in many areas, so but certain provisions, um, like phasing into fees over time, don't necessarily apply on the utility side. What we, the, the opinion we've got from a lot of attorneys. Um, so it, based on each additional house or each additional dwelling, you have multifamily, which are parts here. Impact or connection fees and then non-residential is based on the picture units. The next slide. Um, here the water is going up about, about double. Again, these are from two thousand and seven. And the wastewater, it's coming down slightly. It's gonna be very similar to what you're charging now, but it's calculated to be a little bit lower. And again, this is by meter size or per dwelling unit, um, some additional applications of those fees. And next, I think we're getting, so comparison, um, right now on this list that we expanded the list a little bit on the utility side. Um, you're the lowest on the list and we, we have been coming up still the lowest, but um, not by as much of a margin. And again, but basically at this point, there's not any major expansions of your water wastewater treatment plants that are needed. You have, you have capacity to serve development. So those fees are really based on historical investments that you've made in that capacity. Once you start reaching a point where you're gonna be close to exceeding your capacity, then you're not gonna have to add two, three M G D to your plans, your fees will be significantly higher um, at that time. But right now you have capacity available. Yes. Uh, next. And some, some general conclusions on the, on the police, fire, parks, water sewer. So really it's, it's, the fees are based on recent local costs and we would, we would encourage you to explore charging impact fees for police, fire and parks to reduce the burden on your existing residents as growth continues. And to start setting that precedent now before growth really takes off.
Yeah.
Um, and then the next few slides will be for uh, transportation.
One quick question though, if we, once we select, if we want to move forward with any impact fees, then once we um, set those fees, then we have a, a, a maximum that we can apply going forward from that point, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Three, and I think there was three percent or something like.
Uh, no, so most of the fees that we calculated for police, fire, parks are technically lower than what was calculated in two thousand and seven. Uh, so you could implement those full fees and charge them right away.
Right, but what I'm saying is my question was that once, if we did not go to full fee and we selected a said amount, then the maximum from that point, we can only charge up to three percent. That's what I think was in, was in the orders, okay, or the law, the state law.
Oh.
Don't, don't, don't worry about it. That's just my question. I think that's what I understood, but yeah, we can move forward for. Right, but I, I do know that based on that, what, what, what brought us the state maximum, you, because you can't, you can't burden, you can't put a, a major burden on uh, anybody who's building new or re, I guess, re, um, making improvements or whatever. So I think the maximum was three percent. So that's what I would like to get a little bit more clarification, because once you said it, it's, it's where it's at, and you can't go beyond a certain amount to, yeah, threshold.
I think Larry might touch on.
Yeah.
Good evening. Uh, Sunni. We're gonna have to work together on this. I put animation in some of my slides. So when I say click. Okay, so um, the study is a long document. It's a long, I'm just gonna go over some of the things that are gonna be important to me tonight. Um, click. So and do two more clicks. Then you can see in the upper right hand corner, there's a column called V C, and that's volume and capacity. So the roadway has a certain capacity and how much volume is being consumed. So the closer you come to the number one, the closer you are to failing.
Okay.
So Reed Street or next to the bridge is higher than one. So that, that section, that segment is failed. And the other ones are near it. So you're looking at SR twenty and a couple segments of SR twenty and Reed Street. Now, these are not local roads, but your local roads work as a system with the other state and county roads. So you need to be cognizant of that.
Okay.
Next slide. And next slide. So the methodology for this report is a consumption based, oh, thank you. Yeah, so it's a consumption based impact fee approach. The other one would be a needs based. So consumption is how much uh, of a lane mile is being consumed by new developments. And the general equation for the impact fee study is the demand times the cost minus the credit is the fee. So the demand is the vehicle miles of travel, reach lanes. The cost is the cost of building uh, a vehicle mile of roadway. And the credit is the non-impact fee revenues, and these are calculated from your gas, local gas, local option gas. So the demand variables. The trip generation rate is primarily, the primary source is the newest eleventh edition of the Institute of Transportation Engineers handbook. There are some other resources from a Florida studies database that's in the document. And sometimes we go back to the tenth edition. If the eleventh edition only has, for example, one study and the, the data is not valid enough, we will go back. So the trip generation rate, that's a trip, and there's two trip bands, we, we divide it by two, so we don't overcount. The new trip factor is the amount of traffic that's added to the streets from this new development. And there's an adjustment for pass-by trips. If you don't know what a pass-by trip is, I'm driving down the road with my wife. Hey, let's stop at Dairy Queen. And we pull over and go to Dairy Queen. We weren't going to Dairy Queen, but that's the pass-by trip that's counted for dairy. And the average trip length, in the original study, they did a map survey because, because the geographic area is black and it's quite small. So they came up with a trip length. We increased it because of the annexations that have occurred and the increased amount of roadway miles. And then we adjusted it locally from what's called the National Household Travel Survey. So that, that has a, a trip length by purpose. The cost variables. This is the cost per lane mile constructed via road, roadway capacity. So we looked at three different resources, the F D N T five-year work program, they list all of their projects. We only pulled out the ones that had the capacity, not, not renovations and resurfacing, but only the ones that had near lanes. And the cost per mile models are also for curb and gutter uh, roadway uh, capacity expansion. And then there were some recent projects and they're in the document that were used as examples. So we have four point seven million dollars for the cost and significantly more than it was two thousand and seven. The capacity had in the lane constructed is eight thousand miles of capacity. This was based on a number of other studies. And the cost per V M C is when you divide the uh, cost per mile by the capacity. It's worth five hundred eighty-seven dollars and fifty cents to build a mile. Uh, uh, to build a capacity for one mile. The credit is converted to a gasoline tax equivalent credit. This is in the document. It's all, it's, it's a lot of math, but it's really the formula on the bottom of the seat. It's the cost per gallon divided by the fuel efficiency times the number of days per year that would be uh, using the roads. Times the present value of the gas tax means. And those, that present value is uh, based on interest rate and the length of the uh, project life for twenty-five years. And you can see.
Did you take into account the e- electric vehicles?
No.
You're not gonna be getting taxed.
And so you can see on the upper right, the uh, the cost per V M T has been reduced from um, five eighty-seven minus thirty-five twenty down to five sixty-two now. And new development generates some of the gas tax revenue that will be used to fund capacity expanding transportation improvements. And they'll be credited against the impact fees. Now, the calculation for the impact is, it's uh, all of the things that I just mentioned. So it's the V M T, the daily V M T, the cost per V M T, the total impact cost, and then you subtract the credit, and you have the net impact. So here's your sample calculated impact fees for residential and some non-residential examples. So the red is the fully calculated impact fee from the study. Hospital, House Bill three thirty-seven, as you mentioned, sir, is capping it at fifty percent. So the ones in blue are the fifty percent cap. The one that you see in red is not up to fifty percent because it can only go up to what's the calculated fee is. And these get spread over four years or two years. So the green square is showing you that the impact fees have gone up since two thousand and seven. For those, not the one in the bottom. So over the next four years, you're gonna be capping them. And those are the fees over the four years. So if it's, if it's above twenty-five percent, up to the cap of fifty percent, it gets spread over four years. So you'll see, if you compare it to the current impact fee, you're not gonna get to those levels until the third year, if you look at the column in uh, twenty twenty-five. So the two years, you can see the, the one in the middle in the red, that only went up twelve percent. That's the calculated fee. So that gets spread over two years. And then after the two years, it can be the entire fee. The one on the bottom went down. So there is no cap. It doesn't apply. It's just the fee that was calculated. Does that explain it?
Um, I, I understand a little bit better now as to how all of that works.
Okay, so the important thing to understand is that it's gonna be spread over two or four years, depending on if it's below, if it's twenty-five percent or below, it's two years. If it's twenty-five, if it's twenty-six percent or up to fifty, it's four years. So these are the fees that are proposed from the study. And if you just take a, a quick look, you can see they're close to the other cities where a single family be tasked, for example, it's around thirty-five hundred dollars. They're, they're roughly the same. Um, the one on the bottom, the convenience store, that, that changed with the I T E coast since back in two thousand and seven, they've, they've kind of gotten it better where if it's a convenience store, does it have gas? Is it a gas station where the convenience store, they, they got all that squared out, so it's different now. And that's before the cap. So to compare it with the graph, to, to help you understand, the single family went up. And all these other land uses, you can see the dark green, they're going up. Not all of the money, but the ones, or the examples you see. Sorry? North Port. It's north of Miami. South Wisco, on the other side. Yeah, it's, it's hard to find other cities uh, comparable sizes, yeah, that, that I can show you uh, non-residential land uses, especially since I T E updated all their information. It's, it's changed so much. There's a lot of information, I understand, but if you have any questions.
It's a one-shot deal. We got access to you later on. In the future. It's a lot that, uh, yeah. Yeah. Yeah, when we go up with Lisa, yeah, Lisa can ask.
Let, let the staff.
We've discussed this earlier. The the ordinance that is before you tonight is to institute these new fees. The updated fees, and then our fees are based on recent and localized data. Okay? Whether or not you end up Whether or not you end up actually charging them instead of suspending them, that's another question. Okay? But if you approve this ordinance, you're approving the fees, and you can come back. And if you, if you give staff direction that you don't want to implement them, to actually charge them, you want to suspend them, continue, continue to suspend them, we can do that with a separate ordinance. But the approval of this ordinance would give you that basis, the updated basis that's required by state statute.
My question is.
So we can come back. Okay, go ahead.
Can they adopt the study and the data as a standalone item?
Yes.
So, understand, make sure we're, we're on the same page. My question is, uh, we've had a presentation, we've commissioned the study. We've, they received, the commission has received the study, uh, as it relates to the different components of an impact fee, updated impact fee.
Right.
So I would assume that it's, that adopting any ordinance would have to have as a predicate adoption of the study.
Yes.
That the ordinance was theoretically based upon.
It is in this ordinance.
So my question is. Do they have to adopt the ordinance, or can they go ahead and adopt the study as a standalone item? Follow what I'm saying?
Yes.
Without, without, this ordinance is. My question is, can they, they've had the presentation. I certainly am respectful of the time. The folks that have been here, I know they've been here a long time already. Maybe the commission's digested all this and they're ready to adopt an ordinance.
I have not.
But if not, then at least a predicate could be established if they found the study to be valid and adopted it as their, their data upon which any future ordinance or any ordinance in the near future would be based. Is that feasible, I'm asking? I don't know. I'm asking.
I would say yes, but I would also have to check with our attorney.
You would say yes, maybe?
Yes, maybe.
Um, I think one thing that we have to also note is that, um, even if you adopt the ordinance, it takes 90 days before it goes into effect. Uh, presently, our, um, impact fees are, have been suspended until April 30th, which is about the 90 day time period that we're talking about, because this is a first reading. It's going to have to come back again for a second reading. By that time, we will be around the April 30th deadline, and I think that, I mean, I think that they will be available if wanted to ask more. Probably not at this time of night, but you know, they'll be available if you had more questions or things like that.
So first reading, it does require a second, a second reading. So first reading, normally the second reading is, is, you know, at the next meeting, which is February, right? So then you're telling me there's a built in 90 day delay here before these, these are, before these are implemented.
Yes, sir.
And during that interim time, you're saying that they could, even though they have the ordinance and they've adopted the fees, they could adopt an ordinance suspending the fees, much like they did 16 years ago.
Correct. Okay.
Second.
I haven't read it.
Son, if you read this, I'm going to throw a stapler at you.
Can you stop the stapler?
You're just going to read the caption, right? You're not reading the order.
Okay.
And knowing that the city plan for it to be known as the city plan, the comprehensive impact fee and connection fee ordinance, providing general definitions applicable to all impact fees and connection fees, providing for rules of construction and legislative findings applicable to all impact fees and connection fees, imposing parks and recreational facilities impact fees, providing definitions and finding applicable to parks and recreational facilities impact fees, adopting the park impact fee study, providing for the use of parks and recreational facilities impact fees, providing for an alternative parks and recreation facilities impact the calculation, imposing fire rescue impact fees, providing definitions of findings applicable to the fire rescue impact fees, adopting the fire rescue impact fee, providing for the use of fire impact fees, providing for an alternate fire rescue impact fee calculation, imposing transportation impact fees, providing definitions and finding applicable to transportation impact fees, applicable to transportation impact fee study update, providing for the use of transportation impact fees, providing for an alternative transportation impact fee calculation, imposing law enforcement impact fees, providing definitions and finding applicable to law enforcement impact fees, adopting the law enforcement impact fee study, providing for the use of law enforcement impact fees, providing for an alternative law enforcement impact fee calculation, imposing water connection fees, providing definitions and finding applicable to water connection fees, adopting the water and sewer connection fee study, providing for the use of water connection fee studies, providing for an alternative water connection fee calculation, imposing sewer connection fees, providing definitions and finding applicable to sewer connection fees, providing for the use of sewer connection fees, providing for an alternative sewer connection fee calculation, providing for exemptions, providing for credit for developer contributions, providing for changes in size and use, providing for accounting and reporting of impact fees and connection fees, providing for review hearings, providing for applicability, review, requiring review of the impact fee and connection fee studies and comprehensive impact fee and connection fee ordinance, declaration of exclusion from the Administrative Procedures Act, providing for suburbability, providing for notes of impact fee and connection fee rates, providing for inclusion in the city code, providing for an effective date, providing for screen reserves.
So move. You, you did it first. I was just. He made, he made the motion first. Uh, I'll second. Just put it as such.
Alley Kitchen's 1027 South 12th Street, Palatka, Florida. Don, I hope this is my last time up here today. Back around 2007 when we imposed the impact, yeah, developer came to us. It was a lending road development proposed. It was several thousand acres. And I was very impressed with him because he said, and I quote, "A good developer expects to pay impact fees because that means you have a good city government or government to work with." I was blown away by that, but that's definitely the truth. And referencing that development that didn't come off, then Fire Chief Benabell said, if that development was to come off, we would have to have a brand new fire department just to service that development. We need impact fees. A more recent development in the city of Palatka that was proposed but has not come off yet, I spoke with the current fire chief. He said, if it came off as it was developed, we would have to have a separate fire station for that development. We need impact fees. The developers come in to make money, and again, I'm not holding up for that. Not one dinner, let be a developer. But they don't need to come in and suck the blood out of the city of Palatka's government. You provide the services, they get the services basically for free, they build, they sell, they move out, then you have to swallow those costs, one time costs, and all the costs after that for residential. In 2007 or six, I guess, when we had the study done, the one time cost for one residential unit to be built in the city of Palatka and cost the city services was $40,000. One time, the continual cost to city services, I believe, came around $20,000 a year. Residential does not pay for itself. You need impact fees to offset the cost of residential incurred for our government, in this case, the city government. Industrial pays for itself to some degree, it's a business, and they bring in residential, but the cost, the, the money that the business pays, the taxes the business pays helps offset what the commercial takes, what the residential takes away from you. Agricultural land, for every dollar, you get back 56 cents of it. Natural land, you get back everything. There's no taxes, and you don't have to put out anything. I'm saying, please pass the impact fee study. Go ahead and pass it tonight, and then chew on it if you want to, but we need to have an impact fee. Let them come to Palatka and build, but make them pay for it. Why should we, the citizens and you, the city government who represent us, swallow those costs when they come in to make money and they leave? Again, I have nothing, I reiterate, I don't care if you make money, but don't stick us with a big bill. Pay the impact fee. Impact fees bring good development. Period. Thank you.
But June.
In the future, let's try not to pack the agenda so dense that we hit 11 o'clock at night, and maybe with the limit. Comment from the public. I think some people abuse it. Some people abuse it.